Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:30 PM. Call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law, and we do have a quorum as all the commission is present here today. I'll ask for everyone to please stand and join me in having the invocation by Commissioner Kinsley.
Evening, everybody. Since it is November and Veterans Day is rapidly approaching, this evening I can offer a prayer to our veterans. Oh God, our heavenly Father, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries. May those who have made the ultimate sacrifice rest forever in your holy presence. Comfort the families who mourn and are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and friends. Amen.
Amen. Now, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite and eternal.
And Mark, if you'll read the conflict of interest, please?
Yes, ma'am. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain member of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 All right. And item number one, presentations.
Good evening. Today, we have three presentations, and we'd like to start off with our proclamation proclaiming National Veterans Small Business Week. And joining us today, we have Angela Burton. She is the district director for SBA. And before we read the proclamation, I would like to invite her up to share a few words about the Small Business Administration and what they offer veterans as well.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for this proclamation. It is a testament to your support of our veteran small businesses. And please note that SBA is ready and, well, Stan's ready to empower and support our veterans who are small business owners or entrepreneurs. That's about it, but thank you so much. And I'm protesting this podium. And my friend over there, he might not be able to see over it as well, so, thank you.
So, the proclamation being presented for National Veterans Small Business Week reads as follows. Whereas nearly one out of 10 small businesses across the United States is veteran-owned, from Main Street storefronts to virtual high-end startups that advance America, and veteran-owned small businesses are a pillar of our economy and contribute to the foundation of our nation. And whereas veteran and military spouses, small business owners are resilient, disciplined, and mission-oriented, thanks to their commitment to serving our country and communities. Whereas when we resolve ourselves to strengthen our communities, we must empower and support the giants that veteran entrepreneurs are in our economy. Whereas National Veterans Small Business Week highlights the programs and services available to veteran entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and Resource Partners. And whereas the city of Harlingen supports and joins in the national effort to help Americans veteran-owned small businesses start, grow, and recover their businesses after a disaster and help veterans thrive. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Norma Sepulveda, on behalf of the City Commission, does hereby proclaim October 30th through November 3rd as National Veterans Small Business Week, and we congratulate all those who help them thrive. Congratulations, and we'd like to invite Angela up once again to receive the proclamation.
Congratulations for joining. Right in the middle, and given that this is a veteran, maybe I can have a better close to you. There you go.
Michael, hold that one there. There you go.
What is this? Three, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you for all you do. You communicate very much. Yes, yes. And maybe if we have any veterans that are in the audience, if you could be, if you could stand to be recognized? We thank you today and every day for your service and your sacrifice. We appreciate you, and I'm honored to, to serve on this commission with three veterans as well, and it is definitely dear to our heart, and we appreciate you so much, and we're happy to be able to honor all of you.
This November is also Diabetes Awareness Month, and joining us here today, if you are with Unidos contra la diabetes, if you could please stand to be recognized? And I'd like to invite Sara E. up, as well as the team up front, to share just a few words about their organization and their mission and what they do in the Rio Grande
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Susana Arizbendi, and I am the project coordinator for Unidos contra la diabetes. I am here with our backbone staff, Noah Davis, facilitator, Sara E. Lozano, data coordinator, and we also have one of our junior ambassadors, Jose Arizbendi, in the back. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize November as Diabetes Awareness Month. UCD is working to reduce type 2 diabetes in the Rio Grande Valley. We were established in 2015. We have four work groups, free diabetes screening, policy, and data, that are working hard on this initiative, and being able to receive the proclamation through the city of Harlingen is just bringing us one step closer to reducing type 2 diabetes.
So, the proclamation being presented is as follows. Whereas National Diabetes Month is an annual event each November to boost awareness about the risk factors, symptoms, and types of diabetes. The theme for World Diabetes Day in 2023 is access to diabetes care. In the United States, over 34.2 million people have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, which can lead to heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes, and more young people are also living with type 2 more than ever before, putting them, putting them at risk of developing serious health problems later in life. Whereas World Diabetes Day, held on November 14th, 2023, presents an occasion to heighten global awareness regarding diabetes as a critical health concern and to emphasize the collective and individual actions required to enhance, prevent, diagnose, and manage this condition. Whereas, the team over at Unidos contra la diabetes, in collaboration with hospitals, community clinics, foundations, universities, and faith-based organizations, are dedicated to enhancing the well-being of children and families within our region. Whereas the city of Harlingen wholeheartedly supports Unidos contra la diabetes and its local mission to reduce the occurrence of new type 2 diabetes cases, with an objective of decreasing diabetes prevalence in our communities by 10% by the year 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Norma Sepulveda, on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission, does hereby proclaim November 2023 as Diabetes Awareness Month, and calls upon citizens of Harlingen to join us in creating awareness and promoting health and wellness to combat the prevalence of diabetes in our community. Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Yeah, we, we cannot thank you enough for the work that you're doing in our community. We know that it is prevalent in, in South Texas, and you are working hard each and every day to, to bring those numbers down, and we appreciate you promoting awareness and anything that the city of Harlingen can do to join you in that, in that mission. We're here and we stand with you to do so. If the commission can join me for a photo.
I believe this is maybe the fourth business of the month that we are doing, and after sharing these on social media, we have noticed that a lot of the businesses do get a lot of traction, and, you know, we're very proud that the mayor and commission have allowed us to share about local businesses that maybe the community hasn't heard about. And so we're really proud to present this to another small business. Joining us here today, we'd like to invite Fred and Yadi Robles to please stand. They're sitting in the back, but they should be up front because they are the mayor's small business of the month. They are the owners of Rio Valley Meat Butcher Shop, and we'd like to congratulate, congratulate them because they got first place in the brisket category at the American Royal World Series of Barbecue in Kansas City. They competed against 488 other teams, and they have some of the best brisket in the entire country, so we'd like to give them a big round of applause for that. I think we're all going to be craving brisket after this commission meeting. So, before we present them with the award, we'd like to show a short video that we put together about their small business.
So, we opened up the meat shop in 2008 when the housing market went down. I, I'm originally in construction, so the only other thing that I knew other than construction business was the meat business, because I grew up going to college, I actually worked at HP at the meat center. So, we are a full-service butcher shop, so that's a full service that will cut whatever you want, how you want it. If you want to have a whole chicken cut up into eight pieces to make a caldo, or mole, or fried chicken, we'll do that. We do pork chops, beef ribs, fajitas, steaks, and we offer a wide range of grades. On our cook side, we offer breakfast and lunch. We do breakfast tacos every day, starting at 7:00 AM, and then we do a lunch, and we do brisket plates, like we did today, and we do beef rib plates, we do fajitas, fajita Recently, we had a very big win at the American Royal, 488 teams this year. We had a first-place brisket call amongst, you know, teams from all over the world. So, we are Rio Valley Meat Butcher Shop here on 1219 West Tyler. We are open every day from 7:00 AM to 6:30 PM. We invite all you guys to come on in, support us. We'd love to have you, we'd love to see your friendly faces, and sell you some barbecues.
Please join me in a round of applause as we invite Fred to come up front, as well as this mate, Yadi, to share a few words.
I didn't know we were going to have to speak, but not a problem. First of all, thank you, mayor, for doing this. I think it's great for the community, it's great for us, small business people. Helps drive business to our small mom-and-pop shops, right, which I think a lot of us, I see a lot of friendly faces in here that, you know, we've seen at our store, and that we thank you for that. Thank you to the commission for, for allowing this to happen as well, and thankful to the city of Harlingen for welcoming us with open arms, right? We, we are happy to be here, happy to help in whatever we can and serve the community in whichever way we can, and we'd, we'd love to see you guys out there supporting us as we support you guys as well. So, once again, thank you, guys. I don't know if you, you've got anything to say?
Just thanks for, for showing us the light.
Yeah, we, we really do, you know? Barbecue is near and dear to our heart. We compete throughout the, throughout the nation. Almost every given weekend, I'm out there somewhere, or we're out there somewhere. So, we've been very fortunate, very blessed by barbecue. It's become a way of life, it kind of ties into our meat market, to our business. You know, we've, there's been a couple news articles out there recently because of this big win, and it's been great for business at our shop. If you guys drive by the shop during lunchtime, you'll see that parking lot full. So, we're blessed, man, and God bless you guys, and thank you for everything.
At this time, I'd like the commission to join me with the world champ barbecue folks and take a picture.
Mayor, can you get the recipe while you're up there?
I don't think he wants to share that. So, that's really cool. So, congratulations. Congratulations. One, two, three. One, one, two, three. Yeah, right, let's take it out of the speed. One, two, three.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Congratulations.
So, if you don't have plans, lunch plans for tomorrow, everyone, I invite you to go out to Rio Valley Meat and support local. Moving on to citizen communication. Amanda?
Yes, mayor, we have. The first one is Donna Ray Leonard.
Did I miss something?
Animal Shelter.
Oh, so sorry. I was just so excited and hungry, and, and I missed the presentation by Visit Harlingen. Just tell me, Cassandra.
I got my mat, or my keyboard, so I can.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, mayor and commissioners and members of the community. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I am here to present about what's been going on at Visit Harlingen and what we have planned for the future, and I hope everybody here has already bought their tickets for Rio Fest, because I'll be talking about it a lot. So, Visit Harlingen. Visit Harlingen is formerly known as the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We do not book conventions, so it was imperative we change our name to Visit Harlingen. We do market the convention center, and we will help them in any way we can. If they need, like, prints, they need badges, anything for conferences to come down, we're here to aid them, but they have a great staff at the convention center that takes care of it. Edgar Sedna is our marketing and events manager, and we are hiring an executive secretary. So, anybody watching online, anybody here could apply at the Harlingen website, please feel free to. We're a really fun team, we do fun things for the city, we're always promoting it, attracting people to Harlingen. So, Visit Harlingen, vision and mission. At the Harlingen Convention and Visitors Bureau, our mission is to showcase the vibrant spirit and unique charm of Harlingen to visitors from far and near. We are dedicated to promoting our city as a destination for leisure, business, and cultural experiences. Through marketing strategies and exceptional hospitality, we aim to enhance the local economy, foster community pride, and create unforgettable memories for every visitor. So, we try to do this through attracting, through events, through promoting our local attractions and our hotels, and our mission statement is, "The Harlingen CBB envisions a future where our city is renowned for a top-tier destination, celebrated for its warm hospitality, large events, and attractions. By forging strong partnerships and embracing our unique essence for a community, we aim to positive Harlingen as a must-visit city in Harlingen, leaving a lasting impression on all those who explore our city and its attractions." So, if you go to visitharlingen texas dot com, you can get a list of all the hotels, all the attractions, everything we have to offer in the city of Harlingen. So, this Visit Harlingen manages a $480,000 budget, and we use this budget to market the city as a whole, market the hotels, and fund events, and market these events. As you know, all of our events are getting bigger and bigger, and we do also go out for, to sponsorships to supplement these events, to really attract people from all over the state and all over the world. We get a lot of visitors from Canada, northern Mexico, and Texas itself. So, this year, we're on track to collect about $1.7 million in hotel motel tax, and as you guys know, we don't manage all of the hotel motel tax, just a part of it, and it goes to other factions in the city, but the hotel motel tax does have a healthy fund balance in case of, like, we want to do another project, or, you know, maybe some more lasting art sculptures or something in the city. Over the past six years, the revenues have increased over 25%, so we're in a really positive direction, we're doing really well. The occupancy rate for the month, we have just the past month, so we don't have this recent month, we're at 69%. We have about 1,749 hotel rooms in the city of Harlingen and 26 properties. So, these are the properties that report their budget or their hotel motel tax, and we collect this data from a third-party vendor. Recently, we are, in the next month, we are going to start collecting short-term rental hotel motel tax. So, Airbnb does not give us the money from a renter in Harlingen. The renter themselves has to self, I guess, self-
Report.
Report, yes, sir, thank you. Self-report, and so now we're going to enforce that, and we should see an influx in our hotel motel tax revenues. The city, or Visit Harlingen, really focuses on five events throughout the year. The Harlingen Marathon, Music in the Park, Brews and Tunes, the Beer Fest, Freedom Fest, and Rio Fest. So, these are five big events. Three of these are paid entrance, and the rest of them are free. So, we try to really, really focus on these all year long and make them just very memorable for the community and for all of the visitors alike. So, that was the Harlingen Marathon. We had over 1,100 participants this year, and hopefully in the future, we keep growing, get to at least 1,500, 1,700 marathoners. This is a Boston-qualifying marathon, it is a flat race, so people that are wanting to qualify can come and run this race and get points to go to Boston. And we have runners from Canada, northern Mexico, all over the United States that come and stay in our hotels for the weekend and really, you know, run a fast, quick race to get on the, get on the, to the Boston Marathon. This year, it was cold, and we give a finisher jacket, so it's a really fun thing for participants to get. We have a different color every year, so a lot of people like to collect them, and it really is like a loyal to the sport of running in Harlingen. We have a lot of runners, so if you're practicing, if you're going out to jog in the mornings, now you can start training to run the marathon in February, so everybody here has time to And that was our first-ever Beer Fest that we had at the city of Harlingen. We hosted at the Harlingen baseball field, and we sold out of the Beer Fest tickets. We had 750 Beer Fest attendees and about 1,500 concert-goers to the baseball field. We had food vendors, we had beer vendors, we had a little mini golf. It was so much fun, and all of the community really enjoyed it. So, hopefully next year, we just get bigger and better. And that is a recap video of the birding festival that is held every year in Harlingen. This year will be the 30th year that the festival's held, and it keeps getting bigger every year. They have a wonderful expo, they have an art show, they have tours around to the different birding centers around, around the Rio Grande Valley, actually, and birding is an all-year-round in Harlingen, because like I say, there's 360 days of sun here, and you can really go out and really in your backyard and see a bird, or you can go to Hugh Ramsey, you can go to the World Birding Centers, and it's something that you can do, and you can do it for free. I mean, you could also buy a million-dollar pair of binoculars, but it is something that you can enjoy as a family, you can get outdoors and, and get to know nature and really see what we, you know, what comes down through, it's a migratory path, so it's really important for us to promote it to our visitors. The Hollow Pena 100 is a 100-mile bike ride that Bicycle World of Harlingen puts on every February, and now it is called the Henry Roberts Memorial. This will be the 33rd year that it's held in Harlingen, and it's a really nice bike ride, because you can do a 25-mile, you can do a 60-mile, you can do a 100-mile race, and the proceeds do go to the Boys and Girls Cup of Harlingen, which is something that is very near and dear to our hearts, because it helps, you know, the community and the children of Harlingen and surrounding neighborhoods. This is another event that we promote heavily, and we also help them with, like, promotional items, and we help print stuff for them, and we really just try people to sign up and get out there. So, Rio Fest is coming up, actually, next weekend. Our Rio Fest Art Gallery is opening on- Our Rio Fest Art Gallery is opening on Thursday, November the 9th, from 6 to 8, and it's a free event. And we encourage all of the community to go see what the art, the children have been up to. They have really, really nice pieces, they have 2D, 3D, they have photography, excuse me, and it's a beautiful art show that is going to be on at the Gasta de Amistad. In the past, Rio Fest always had an art gallery at Gasta de Amistad, and we're bringing it back, so it's going to be a lot of art. And if you did not get to participate in the art show, we're going to have canvas and paint for your child, or if you would like to, I guess we don't have an age limit. If you would like to participate in the show, you can paint, and you can set it up on some art walls that we're going to have. So again, we encourage the community to attend, it's a free portion of the event. And we will, that will be open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it's a free portion. And then the really fun music and food vendors and all the vendors were going to be on the baseball field, and you can buy your tickets at harlengerofest.com. And we did a lot of marketing for the event, we did digital TV, our traditional marketing, like printing, and of course, everybody gets their information from Facebook. So of course, we definitely hit that one up. And we also did a special digital and print package in Texas Monthly this year. And we ran some digital ads, some homepage ads, they did a nice little write-up on the city of Harlingen for us. And those are some of the metrics that we received from them. And we also attend expos and conferences. We recently went to the Telfra Conference in Corpus to bid for the 2026 Telfra Firefighter Pension Board for them to be in Harlingen. And I made a presentation, and they did accept us for 2026, so that they will be here in Harlingen at the convention center. And we attend expos such as the Winter Texas Expo, we attend like travel and tourism events, just to really promote Harlingen and to get the word out there. We do that throughout the year. We also, we promote the hotels and the attractions in Harlingen, like the Iwo Jima, the downtown Jackson Street, local restaurants, the Tony Blair Golf Course, the airport, Bass Pro Shop, the convention center, always birding and outdoor activities in Harlingen. So see you all at Rio Fest. Is there any questions you might have for me?
I don't have any questions, just want to thank you for the presentation, and you're doing an amazing job, everybody's excited for Rio Fest. And just maybe add for those that are listening at home, and I know we have veterans that are here in the audience, and in honor of veterans for this month, they all get in free, is that right?
Yes, yes, free entry for veterans, and I just need just to provide your veteran ID card at the front, and then it'll be all great for you to come in. So through the front entrance of the Harlingen Baseball Field.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
And great job on securing that event happening at the convention center, that's going to be wonderful.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Great job.
Thank you, have a nice night.
And now, Amanda, Citizen Communication.
Okay, we have Don Ray Leonard, and her topic is animal shelter.
Generally, in the animal welfare industry, a shelter must have at least 90% placement rate for animals to be considered no-kill. Approximately 600 dogs, puppies, cats, and kittens are killed each hour in the United States in overcrowded shelters because there's just not enough homes for them. The world of animal rescue has its extremists. There are those who abuse and mistreat the animals, and those who claim to love and value all of God's creatures. I believe, just like in religion and politics, that there are far more moderates out there, people who are trying their best to do right by the animals. But for today, we ask the fundamental question for your consideration. We're not concerned with the Humane Society contract, nor are we interested in the plans for the new shelter. We want to know who among you is committed to a no-kill shelter, kill or no-kill? The question is foundational. How you answer will lay the groundwork and become the basic core and inspiration for the animal shelter going forward. Nothing else matters until we know that this city commission is dedicated to the moral and ethical treatment of our community's animals and their needs. This is not an animal problem, this is a people problem. We are the intellectuals. Educating our community about spaying and neutering is only, is the only answer to the deep-rooted problem of overpopulation, not euthanization. We want our citizens to know that our animals will be treated with dignity. We want the animals to thrive in a no-stress environment while waiting to be rescued, fostered, or adopted. We don't want Fluffy's picture posted on Facebook imploring someone to come save her life because tomorrow, her number is up. It appears the physical condition of the animal shelter has never been a priority in past administrations. However, after touring the current shelter just two weeks ago and witnessing its deplorable conditions, the powers that be have had an epiphany that we must build a new shelter. And so I ask you, what kind of shelter will that be? Unfortunately, the point is mute until you decide on kill or no-kill. It's our duty as tax-paying citizens to ask each of you, including the mayor, where you stand and get you on the record. We are entitled to your answers, because this commission is so committed to transparency. Stop hiding everything in executive session. Mr. Lopez, you are my commissioner, kill or no-kill?
I'd like to remind the members of the commission, this is public comment, it's not appropriate for members of the commission to enter into a deliberation on any issue, and it's inappropriate to respond to public comment.
Understood.
Minutes are up?
Thank you.
The next one, Mayor, is Albert Garcia, and it's regarding concerns on traffic.
Hello, y'all. My name is Albert Garcia, I live at 1406 Barton Avenue. For years, my father was there, until he passed away, I inherited the house, and I've noticed, I prepared a few photos for y'all to look at. I've noticed the sounds of revving engines and cars racing by quite fast during, going down that street. And I've also noticed skid, not only skid marks, but like peeling-out marks. And I'm hoping that the commission will consider having to put some kind of speed bump or something there. I know that that area is, I guess, light industrial area and residential as well, but it's like one of my neighbors says, you know, we're not dead yet. I mean, there's a lot of elderly people there. A few blocks away is Crockett Elementary, and in which those pictures do indicate skid marks or peeling-out marks of going towards the school. You know, we need your help, we need your help at this time. So if at all, if the city commission would please consider putting speed bumps, or even a study of what kind of traffic goes through there, it'd be great. I know I, I find myself at a disadvantage, because I, you know, earlier I spoke to another officer about that situation, and he asked, "Well, did you call the police?" And I just swallowed my tongue, and I go, "No." Unfortunately, I didn't. But here I'm asking you, please, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And Oscar, I have Mr. Garcia's phone number, if you can reach out to him, please, and I'll forward you the email as well.
Maricela Alvarado, City Performance. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Maricela Alvarado, and I'm a small business owner. I like to call myself the proud Latina veteran. I'm also a veteran, so I have a small rental business here in Harlingen, and I just want to thank the city of Harlingen, because many times, my tenants have issues, and I can call the city, and you guys are actually very quick to respond to some of those needs that they have, like if the water breaks or something. So I just want to thank you for that. The other thing that I want to say is, I know that the animal shelter has been a very big issue with everybody, and we all love animals. Myself, I rescued 10 dogs, and I still have six dogs that I'm taking care of, we love them all. And I know it's a big issue, and it's real dear to our hearts, and I just want to thank the commission for actually agreeing to build the new facility. I read that it's going to be a new facility for our animals, and there's going to be a walking, there's going to be a dog park, which I love to take my dogs to park, and I know the citizens are going to be really happy about that. And there's going to be also a walk area around it. So I just want to thank the city for doing that and for listening. I can get contentious sometimes, or you know, but for listening to us on what we need in the city, and just, it's a great city. I moved here after I retired, and every day, there's something new to do here in the city. My friend over there, Lynn, is out of town, from out of town, and she tells me about all the great things that you guys are doing, and it was great to see the video. So thank you again. I know your job is hard, but I want to thank y'all for being so supportive to our community here, a little community that we just love our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado.
The next one, Mayor, is Lynn.
Is that all? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item two, approval of the minutes. We have item 2A, regular meeting of September 2023. Is there any amendments, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the change I sent to Amanda's office earlier today. It was just a clarification on the comment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three of the consent agenda, is there anything to pull out?
Ma'am, not pull out, but on item 3D, we need to make a correction. This is for the Christmas Parade, and in section one, on that page, it says the elected commission, blah, 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 hereby establishes the rental rates for Fiesta de Piñatas. We just need to change that to Christmas Parade.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a question on F, please.
Okay. Do you want to pull it out?
Yeah, if we could pull F, and if we can pull H as well.
Okay.
Mayor, can we, can we pull C out also? I think DDC needs to make that ref explanation.
Okay, so we'll pull C, F, and H. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
You know, and if we can do, if we can pull A real quick, just for a vote, that's all it is.
All right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve 3B, D with the change E, and G?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3A, consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to residential duplex district for a property located at 718 North C Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 2, Block 1, Shaw Edition. And what did you want?
I just need a vote on it, just a vote separate from what we did earlier.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. And item C, consideration of possible action to approve an agreement between the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation and Project SPUR regarding Chapter 380 agreement. Orlando?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Commissioner, excuse me, what you have for consideration is an incentive agreement that was discussed during executive session at the last council meeting. We did make one, want to make one clarification and also make you aware of the change in the agreement itself. What we've added in the agreement is not only the hourly wage, but we've also included wording to be sure to capture any incentives, and that would be paid to the employees to ensure that they meet the minimum criteria of the incentive agreement. So obviously, as we do, are due diligence at the end of the year to determine whether or not a company will qualify for incentives. We will take into account all the full amount that employees have received to ensure that the minimum wage was achieved per employee. And so that's the clarification that we wanted to make.
Just to, just to reiterate, it does not change the incentives that are being offered to the company, it only changes the way that the payment to the employees is calculated, that's all it does.
That is correct.
So they still stay above the $15 per hour?
Yes.
And the 75%, all that stuff?
Yeah, based on the discussions with the prospect, they've indicated that they will typically earn much more than the minimum wage that's highlighted in the agreement itself.
Okay, make the motion approve with amendments that Orlando's-
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great job, Orlando.
And moving on to 3F, is that right? Consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the Code of Ordinances, Article 2, Division 2, Section 6-56, to provide for appointment and composition of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Commissioner?
Yes, here's my objection. I was going through this last night, and then I realized that sometime after 10 o'clock that this was on the email. I'm wondering why we want to switch and have the mayor have two votes from here on in, two members on this commission? In the past, and everything is identical to what it was back in 20... 2004, I believe. Except for that, the number of appointees has increased by two in this new, in this new verbiage, and it was adopted back in 2004. But once again, I'm curious as to why we feel that from here on in, the mayor needs to have two voting members, and not one, just like we have it here.
That's what the commission agreed at the last meeting, and so we made that change. Initially, what was in your packet was an older version, but the commission agreed that we would have the mayor appoint two, and that we would not determine who the chairman was, the board themselves would determine that.
I understand.
So the reason you have this is because that's what the commission approved, so that's what we're providing to you.
And Commissioner Morales, the change to the board happened when you were on the commission, and I was not here, and that ordinance showed that the mayor had two appointments when I was not here, when you voted on that and you proposed it with Commissioner-
When somebody else came up with this, okay.
So it stayed the same, so it did not increase, it stayed the same, the way that it was when it was voted on before I was here.
Okay, well, I will be objecting to this one.
Okay. And you're entitled to do that. So is there any other questions?
At this moment, the answer is no.
Okay, so is there-
Yeah, I just wanted to clean up just one sentence, it's more clerical, just to make it easier to read. So if you look at section A, and Mark, I'll send you the language if the board approves it or the commission approves it. Second sentence in A says, and this is what I'm proposing it, to say, "The mayor shall appoint two members, each commissioner shall appoint one. Board members shall have, board members shall be appointed to a term of office." It's just cleaning up the unnecessary language, I think. And then on B, it says members, I think it's supposed to be member, but I think the language is a little funny, because it said that there should be seven members who vote, and then the next sentence is, "The mayor shall appoint two voting members," and then it said after that, "Each city commissioner shall have one appointment to the board." I was just like, let's clean it up and make it easier to read. Otherwise, I think it's good to go. So I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the changes I have proposed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item H, consideration, 3H, consideration of possible action to approve the installation of speed humps in the following locations.
I'm going to add Barton to be, Mr. Garcia's street of Barton, to be analyzed, please.
Wonderful. And Commissioner, is this the, are you adding the one in your district?
Yes, I was going to also add the one on Nuaces Park.
No, not in that district, in the Palm, Palm Valley, or I think I sent you one-
Oh, that's already on there.
Okay, all right.
And I'm also adding one on Nuaces Park as well, on, let's see, South Nuaces, South Nuaces Park.
Now I just add for the record that I'm not requesting that speed hump on Nuaces Park.
No, I got a, I got an email from a, a constituent on that, um, street.
That is not me, just so that it's out there. But if the neighborhood wants it, we will definitely do it after they have made their, done their studies. But just, there's always a lot of misinformation, so I want to go very, very clear that I'm not asking for that. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, subject to the supplemental streets that we just added.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right, item four, new business, public hearing and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a SUP to allow a bar lounge in a light industry district located at fifteen ten North Commerce Street, bearing illegal description of lot three, block one, uh, replaid of lot one, block one, Casablanca subdivision.
May I say, commissioner, good evening. Uh, this is a place, it has been a bar for many years, but there's a proposed, a new operator for the bar. Uh, this is on fifteen ten Commerce Street, uh, just south of Orange Heights. So this is the existing bar, it's, and it's, the proposed new bar is proposed to be named Sleepwalkers. And there's a restaurant nearby, there's a share parking agreement with the restaurant. And that's the floor plan of, of the existing bar. And that's the, from Commerce, that's the location of the, of the place. Like I said, it's been a bar for many years. That's the photo of the existing, uh, building. And there will probably be some cosmetic changes. And that's the restaurant across the parking lot. Letter from the owner of the restaurant agreeing to share, to share the parking with the bar. And then here you have the list of, uh, conditions that we have, the standard conditions for bars. And the old, the operators have no objections to this. This went before PNC last week and no, no one spoke in opposition and recommended approval unanimously.
So later on, we're going to be going through, uh, later on in the agenda, I want to say it's item fifteen, we're going to be looking at fixing up some of the storefronts. I think the area that Orlando's proposing would be on Commerce. Would this applicant be willing to fix up the facade? I know that on Commerce, we're already looking at doing a pretty major renovation in the coming years. And I want to make sure that if we're going to spend the money on the boulevard, that all the storefronts on there are looking nice.
She, she probably already has plans to do that, uh, but I can ask her i- if, um, I'm sure she will be willing to do that.
Okay, we have to have two readings of this anyways, correct?
Yes.
Could you find out for me between?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, all right. At this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak, we'll close it at this time and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number sixteen dash eight of the city of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit, SUP, uh, to Veronica Marie Rosas, to allow a bar lounge in a light industry, L.I. district, located at fifteen ten North Commerce, bearing illegal description of lot three, block one, repla- of lot one, block one, Casablanca subdivision.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Item five, consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordnances, chapter one oh-nine subdivisions, adding section one oh-nine through one ninety-three, parkland dedication as a condition of subdivision plat- approval for a property inside the city limits or within the extraterritorial jurisdiction to be used for residential and multifamily uses, providing for park zones, providing for payment in lieu of land dedication under certain circumstances, and providing for refunds under certain circumstances. Javier?
Yeah, so it was approved on first reading. It was just a concern about the map, this, with the park zones.
Mm-hmm.
So a study was done. So this is the, the original map from two weeks ago. Uh, so it shows a, a lot of disparity on the subdivisions recorded since twenty fifteen that are single-family, residential, and multifamily, and subdivisions in process. Uh, so as you can see, park zone, the original zone one shows more activity than the other zones. So we came up with an option B, which transfers this, all of this area to zone four. Uh, so the numbers got better, but there's still some disparity. So then we also came up with an option C, which transfers this portion to zone two and then this portion here to zone three. So with this option C, you have more regular, more, uh, regular distribution of subdivisions in process and recorded since twenty fifteen. Uh, so these are the options for your consideration. Uh, B or C work, will work very well.
Yeah, I, they had shown me B and I asked for C just to, uh, even out those numbers a little more. Uh, I think it works, but there was something else I wanted to discuss. If you guys look at the writing or the written part of it, the ordinance, you go to two, it says money in lieu of land, and then so two B. What I'd like to change is that right now it says funds for all park zones could be used for the acquisition of land for a regional park. I'd like to cut out the regional park, the regional part. And so for it to say, and I'm including some language, funds for all park zones could be used for the acquisition of land for a park to be created after the passing of this ordinance or for improvements to regional parks. The reason I'm thinking that is in my neighborhood, we have like a nice little, like neighborhood park. I think it's like two, three blocks right across the street from Pablo Rocha's immigration office.
Windsor.
Windsor Park. And then I know that in the, you have Hunter Park in your district, right? But in your, uh, part of the neck of the woods, District Five, you don't have any parks. I think the way we have it originally is they, I think before, you used to have, you used to have Victor Park in your district, now you only have Win- Wilson. But I think it was.
Dixieland.
And Dixieland, but, yeah, correct me, thank you. The sports complex. But I think it's a good thing to have those small little neighborhood parks. And so what I would like to do is be able to free up the money to create those neighborhood parks. Just, again, two acres, right, which is the proposed language, which you're saying is that they could just donate anyways, right? But I like it and so that's why I put the language for a park to be created after the passing of this ordinance. So it can't go to any parks that are already created, but to be created.
You're not wanting to use this for any parks that are?
No, no, and it stays for improvements of regional parks.
Just, just regional parks?
Yeah, so it would, that's what it says right now. It says, park, funds for all park zones could be used for the acquisition of land for, this is what it says right now, for a regional park or for improvements to regional parks, sorry.
And did we, Javier, did we detail the regional parks, what they were going to be?
Yes.
Which, which ones were they?
It's in, it's in the ordinance.
It's in that same paragraph.
I got the list, uh, from Mr. Mendez and they're listed in the ordinance.
And it says Victor Park, Lonzie Hill Park, Pendleton Park, the soccer complex, and the Wilson Sports Complex.
So, hang on a minute. The funds from these parks can be used for acquisition of land for?
For right now, it says currently just for regional parks, which would create another Lonzie Hill or another Pendleton Park. What I'm saying is, acquisition, cut out the regional park so that we can use that money for the acquisition of neighborhood parks.
Well, um, could you just not add that instead of taking it out? Because what if you want to create another regional park as the city grows?
That's what I'm saying, is if you take out regional, at least you, you're not tied to a regional park or a neighborhood park. You're leaving it just a park.
Park in general.
A park in general. I'm trying to widen it.
Okay, yeah, I know, I'm sorry, I was, yeah, got it, okay.
Okay, so, uh, at TML, I stopped by Texas Parks booth and I have a flyer that I've forgotten to bring you, Gabe. Uh, and they call these pocket parks. And they encourage these little pocket parks, especially down here where we could plant native brush and attract wildlife, attract birds. And so there are grants available to do this. And so, Gabe, I will give you that flyer with all that info.
All right.
Okay, I just, I was thinking it was cutting out the regional parks.
Correct.
Right, so.
And then just adding the language to be created after the passing of this ordinance.
So potentially you could create, you could, you could say, we, you know, the time has come for another regional park or a, a neighborhood park within, maybe a new subdivision comes up in an area where it hasn't had many homes and, and now you have a green space.
Correct.
Okay, makes sense.
The only thing, well, I'm trying to understand it, the only thing about, about.
The, the language is, you said it kind of odd, but it's written better.
And, and just, uh, keep in mind that, that developer also has the option of setting aside property within his.
Correct.
Subdivision to actually create a park.
Yeah, but I know Javier had concerns because he said that the price of land is so expensive, it's probably just cheaper for him just to.
Oh, ninety-nine percent of the developers will just pay the park fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's true, but that is an option.
It is, it is an option.
I think also when we have some of those, which they can come to the commission, right? If they have the subdivision where they're going to have amenities within the subdivision, there's also, um, flexibility when it comes to that as well.
Right, they get credit for that.
Which is good.
So if they're pro- proposing amenities, they can request a discount up to fifty percent. The city commission will have the final say on that.
Okay, so is there any other questions?
Well, yeah, I was, I was like, um, option C. On option C, I mean, you're cutting out my section by a lot. And the thing is, like you mentioned earlier, it seems from my, from my point of view at least, that my, my district or my area of town is the one that needs the most, um, help when it comes to parks because we don't have any, because we only have Dixieland and we have the sports complex. And it seems that by doing option C, you're, you're narrowing it a little bit more, but a lot of the other zones already have parks. They already have their neighborhood parks, they already have the bigger parks. So I think my section is the one that's going to need more of the, more options, more funding sources because they're the ones that we need to catch up. Uh, my section is the one we're playing catch-up compared to all the other ones. So I'm okay with B, because I think B makes it a little bit more narrow, but I think C is making it where, you know, the other sections already have all these other parks. Mine doesn't have really much and I would like to develop more in my area. By north of that, we need the funding. So I would like to go with option B instead of C.
That's fine either way, right? Doesn't, in my mind, I was like, I don't know why we're stuck to four zones, right? And we could have just cut it right in half, sitting in half, however you want to.
All right.
So I'll make the motion to approve option B and then with the language I proposed and I'll send that to Mark as well.
And to me, please.
Uh, oh, and to the guy who needs it as well, right?
Yes, yes, please.
And I'm, all right, she did kind of rhyme.
All right, so is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Item six, consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordnances, chapter one eleven zoning. Well, did we, did we need to read the caption on five before we voted, Mark?
No, I mean, I, I can do it.
Did we need to?
We didn't need to.
Okay, all right. It's a second, okay, all right. Item six, consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordnances, chapter one eleven zoning, article five, section one eleven dash one nineteen yard setback regulations by establishing a section which allows a special exception to be granted to the minimum setback requirements for carports. Is, was there a discussion for this?
Yeah, so there was some language that was, uh, there was some concerns about, which is a language highlighted in, in yellow there. Uh, so basically what it means is if the lot has access to the backyard, for example, through an alley, uh, in my calendar, what they're saying is if you have an alley, we want the carport in the backyard and not in the front. So if this, if that language stays, subdivisions that have alleys, they will be at a disadvantage over no alleys because the board could use that to, to not grant the special exception.
Why don't you just say it like that in the ordinance if the commission wants to keep it?
So, y- you can stay if that's, if that's, if you want the same.
Not like that, but the way you just explained it.
Right, we didn't understand this, um, last time.
Yeah, but they cleaned up the language, right? Uh, and so I, I think it's best that we just strike the language A, get rid of the highlighted part. Because what he's saying is that if you have an alley behind your house, then you have to park it in the back, but I just don't see it happening.
Yes.
Did we table this last meeting?
It was approved.
It, it went, we just asked for some, that's why I forgot the discussion.
We asked for clarification, okay.
On what that, yeah.
He couldn't define, I think, the vehicular, I don't remember exactly what it was, but, um, but, okay, so there's a, um, a motion to approve striking, um, A, is that correct, that language?
Correct, a, a motion to approve this ordinance, striking D one A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Item seven, discussion on possible amendments to the signed ordinance to allow more than one flag, feather flag sign per business at one time. Um, I, I spoke to Javier about this. I got a lot of, a lot of businesses calling with some concerns that they didn't have enough, the larger, uh, businesses, one feather flag was not sufficient. And so I asked Javier to kind of look into it and give some, uh, proposals to the commission to maybe, uh, clean it up so that way it could be a little bit more business friendly. I think it was done with, with great intentions and the Small Business Board did an amazing job and worked really, really hard on it. Um, but, you know, if things can be improved, then why not, right? So.
Yeah, so the, the logic is, uh, bigger businesses should be allowed to have more feather flags, uh, because they're bigger businesses. So the ordinance could be amended to allow one for every fifty feet of building, of the length of the building, uh, one for every seventy-five feet or one for every one hundred feet. Uh, the new academy, for example, if, if we go with the fifty, they will be allowed six feather flags at one time. If we go to, with seventy-five, they will be allowed four. If we go with the one hundred, they will be allowed to have three at the same time for thirty days. Here's another example, this is the Texas Roadhouse and the, the building measures one hundred feet along the front edge. So if we go with the, if you go with the fifty, they, they could have two feather flags at the same time as opposed to just one. So those are the options for your consideration. Uh, if, if you agree to one of the numbers, we can work on an ordinance amendment and schedule public hearings.
Excuse me, do these businesses want the, the, the flag?
Uh, these are just, uh, examples, yeah, I haven't heard from them.
We had one business that reached out, um, I went to the, uh, we had an event at the, at the Royal Park and there was a business there that had, uh, a larger business and, and he was one of the reasons why, uh, the Small Business Advisory Board even really started to consider it. Um, and he mentioned that having the one would, wouldn't make a, make a difference. And then where his business is located, there's not a lot of, a lot of traffic. And so that was the reason why, um, we went back and looked at it. And then I did receive a lot of messages, uh, from, from folks, um, small businesses asking questions. Some, some were, you know, positive feedback and then others were, it was a little bit limiting. So this just gives them more opportunity. And the, and I, and I'm pretty sure, I think, I don't think he'll have a problem with me sharing. It was Trek and, you know, he, the bicycle store. And so they've had some struggles and, and we want to be able to be, to, to support them. And he said, you know, Norma, if I have one flag, what's it going to do for this huge building that I have, which makes sense? Um, and so I told him that I would come and talk to the commission and, and, and see what we can, what we can do to help them.
I think like a hybrid would be the best way to do it, right? So like, you have, we have like plazas, right? And so in a plaza, you may have like four building or four businesses, so each one would get one.
And if you have a lot.
In the ordinance right now, it's, it's set up that way.
Correct.
And so in a plaza, each business could have one, but, but if bigger businesses, yeah, are limited to one.
Yeah, and then I, I would say if we keep that language and then just include this, I'm fine with it.
Right, that's what he's, he's proposing to do. So all that rest will stay the same, so you get those little smaller boutique type, uh, businesses. They're, they're not going to have ten out there or whatever. But this would give them op- opportunity to, to, you know, to be able to promote their business. I think it's a good thing and I want it to really defer to Javier because he knows more about, um, depending on the space, what, what would be.
Sir, I recommend going with the fifty. Going with the fifty and I think that Trek business could, I think they have a hundred feet, so they could have two. Yeah.
Fifty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of this language.
Well, right now it's just discussion, now I'm going to draft the ordinance and schedule public hearings.
Perfect, good.
Yes, and, and another thing also with the public hearing, uh, just putting this out there for the commission, there was also, um, concern about the fee. It's, it's, what is it?
These are twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars. And so maybe that's something for the commission to kind of consider, um, and when talking to businesses in your district, in your individual dis- districts, if that is an issue or if it's not an issue. Some businesses said, you know, we shouldn't have to pay a fee at all, um, but, and then others were really happy with, okay, well, we've got this, we've got this opportunity to, to do that. And I understand. And I understand that it takes work from, from, from the department to be able to, to make sure that it's done in a way that is orderly. So that's something just to, to consider.
How long will it take you guys to review the, the application, plus, like, review the whole process?
It's, uh, the way it's set up, if somebody comes into the office to apply for a feather flag, um, it's a one-stop. So we help them with the application form, we help them choose a location, we print the aerial photograph for them, mark the location, and then we take them to building, uh, building inspections, so it's a one-stop process to, to get a permit.
Yeah, my question, yeah, how long would that take, the whole process?
About twenty minutes, twenty, thirty minutes.
Yeah, just so, so for you to consider, I hadn't, you know, I, like I said, I've talked to, to businesses on both sides, some that have no problem with it, others that do, and there's businesses in every district, so, um, just so something for you, for y'all to consider.
And so for this new one, if you were to get two flags, you'd get one permit, so it'd still be the twenty bucks.
It's still, yeah, twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, alright, well, thank you for that, Javier. Is there any other questions from the commission? Thank you. Um, item eight, presentation by Daniel Hausbeck. Hausbeck from Valley Risk Consulting regarding the award of windstorm insurance to insurance carriers.
Good morning, or good evening, mayors and city commissioners and city manager. My name is Daniel Hausbeck with Valley Risk. Um, tonight, we're gonna go through the property insurance. These are the properties that you currently have that are on to the Harlingen side of the properties. These are the properties you have with the Harlingen Waterworks. We've done a calculation for different ones, this is your current property, it's, uh, current, where you go? This is your current valuation and your current, uh, insurance. As you can see, it is currently with CRC, it's got multiple, uh, carriers. You also have, this is the new valuation for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. These are the prices for each one of them. You have a total, uh, this one, this one is by CRC with three different carriers. This one was done by Gallagher. We also went out, looked at different ones for different types of properties. We added some TWEA in here to try to get the commercial property a little cheaper than what it was before. But, and then what we did was, uh, looked at the different prices. For the first one here, at seven point five million on occupancy. It went for five percent deductible at a hundred thousand minimum, and then we, twenty twenty-three was three hundred and seventy thousand. Twenty-three to twenty-four would be four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which would be an eighteen-three percent increase. And we went with another property with the same company, with a five million dollars, with TWEA, at Texas Wind Association. And we had at twenty twenty-three, three hundred and seventy thousand and three hundred and ninety. This property would only be a four point two percent increase. We looked at this one with a company that was with CRC, they had two carriers with Victor Insurance. Victor Insurance is a company that you guys had before in twenty twenty, that disappeared before that. Okay, they were, uh, here with you guys for many, many years, they were able to compensate for everything else before. Then you had another company came in and changed that over. Okay, so your total prices for A, this is what we recommended, at a seven point five million dollar occupancy, or per, uh, per occurrence, at a five percent deductible with a hundred thousand dollars, with TWEA to cover seventeen million of the coverage limits, which would give you only a one percent deductible. With these two prices, we put those together, you had a difference of, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, just for, uh, the City of Harlingen would be three oh eight, and for the Harlingen Waterworks would be a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We recommended this one by Victor Insurance in order to be able to cover your insurance profit. Um, I think you guys have all the information about the executive summary, I don't know if you read it or not.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, no.
The, um, of course specialty, that would be the insurer, and Beasley from Lloyd's would be the reinsurer.
Correct.
Is there, is there anything that?
Do you have any other question?
No.
Oh, okay.
Is there any, uh, anything the city can do to minimize its risk?
In which fashion? And, cause yeah, we did minimize the risk by moving it over from just being under three carriers to putting it under TWEA. TWEA has a better coverage than just having an open.
I'm referring to actually hands-on construction to secure the buildings, so roofs won't fly off, broken windows, that kinda thing. Is there anything that we can do as far as, uh, I know following the deaf ears in the past, uh, get a consultant that can specialize on, on, on trying to minimize the, the potential risk? We've been blessed for a while for not being, uh, for being spared a good hurri, a good hurricane.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and, and your recommendation, um, the problem is, we get hit, we're, the city's gonna be liable for a lot more than just your recommendation, because we're, we're gonna have to fork it out.
I mean, you can go out and hire somebody that would do a construction evaluation, that would look at the property and see if you have hurricane brackets, which I'm pretty sure almost all them have, because it has to be under code. So during codes, they have to be able to pass codes for having hurricane brackets and things like that.
Is that something that you have, uh, recommended, recommended to, to our staff?
No, we don't get into building construction, we look at the insurance, I mean, the insurance carrier or T M L may be able to help you out with that. So, because they offer you the general liability, and they could come out and offer something like that, like you do for other things to, uh, to evaluate each one of the properties.
I'm sure I can probably get with Oscar to hire somebody to look at an analysis of not just ours, but, uh, perhaps Waterworks and the airport also, and, and just, uh, give them part of the bill to do that. Actually, the airport just made some changes, I think you dropped some coverages, right?
Yeah.
From some of your buildings? Yeah, so we can do an analysis on ours and, uh, hire somebody to, to actually do that, and make a recommendation as to which ones they recommend that we either reconstruct or just remove from the coverage altogether.
Sounds good.
And then, is my understanding correct, sir? I don't know if you know this one, uh, but buildings, including houses east of the Interstate sixty-nine, need to have hurricane brackets in the roofs, and buildings west of sixty-nine don't? Is there, do you know any, is that a valid, uh?
I guess it would depend on what your.
Hey, I mean, I was told that once, I don't know if it's a valid, uh, statement or not.
Commissioner, I don't think that's accurate, because I think our building codes are, are, uh, they're ubiquitous to the entire city. There, there are no lines that bifurcate the city for that, so it's everybody.
And it would also depend on when the building was built.
That, that might be an actual different case, but not, there's no line that divides who has to have.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you, we appreciate you. Item nine, consideration and possible action.
Mayor.
Is there's no action?
Actually.
It doesn't say that.
No, it didn't say action, it says presentation. Okay.
Right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that back the next meeting.
Maybe it can just be on, well, yeah, okay. Item nine, consideration and possible action to accept or reject the bid from South Texas Pools and award the contract for the Long Sea Hill Destination Park Phase Two Construction, Javier?
Yes, good evening, mayor, city commission, uh, for the record, uh, my name is Javier Mendez, Parks and Rec Director. Um, I know this is not normal protocol, um, but we submitted the, the agenda item. Um, we, we had gone out for, for bids for the, uh, for the Long Sea, uh, Hill Destination Park Phase Two, which included the trail, the construction of the trail in the back, uh, which is about one mile. And, um, it was gonna also, we're also gonna light it, and then there's also gonna be a water station. Uh, but since then, um, city management, city management asked us to see if we can, uh, look into or evaluate doing the work in-house. And so, uh, we met with, um, city engineer, with Public Works, uh, city manager, or assistant city manager, I should say, um, to see what it would cost, uh, us to do it in-house, and so Louise has some numbers, um, what that would cost. Our, our budget for this project was one point five million, the lowest bid came in at one point, uh, forty-eight. Um, and so I believe, um, Louise, um, I believe the bids, or what their cost was, is about six hundred roughly, um, six hundred thousand if we did the work in-house. And so, um, uh, of course, visiting with, with, uh, Oscar, uh, he says that, you know, we could use the resources from Public Works, uh, together with, uh, parks, and we can build that, uh, that trail. It's gonna be a concrete trail about ten feet wide, um, and, um, of course, the lighting as well, so. Uh, we would like to, uh, like the city commission to consider rejecting all the bids, um, and then, of course, directing staff to, uh, look into building in, in-house.
You had me at six hundred thousand. Sold, so I will make the motion to reject all the bids and look at doing it in-house, Oscar, thank you very much. Javier, thank you very much, Louise, thank you very much, this is gonna save us a lot of money that we can put into other projects.
Well, just, just keep in mind that, that the funding came from the four B, so any savings, we just have to go back to the four B and get authorization to use it on other projects.
That's fine, at least the money stays in the piggy bank.
It does.
Can we use less money?
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you, we appreciate you, yeah, and thanks, Oscar.
You made a motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item ten, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to approve a lease agreement with Yamaha karts and Vantage Tag systems for golf carts and a utility range cart to be used at the Tony Butler Golf Course.
Um, mayor, I'd like to explain, uh, what are we trying to do here before Jeff gets up to the podium?
Okay.
Um, this item was intended to do two things, uh, either buy or rent golf carts, uh, and then purchase, uh, GPS systems through Vantage Tag, uh, for the golf carts. Um, we're going to delay the Vantage Tag systems because the quote did not make it into your package. So all we're gonna talk about tonight is just the, uh, Yamaha karts, either rental or, or, uh, or purchase. Uh, in your package, you had, um, the last four pages were for the, uh, the Yamaha karts. The first one, uh, the first set of those pages was for a fleet of gas-powered carts. And the first page was to actually, uh, lease them for forty-eight months. Um, the rental rate would be about one, actually would, would be one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, uh, a month. And the reason we're getting such a great rate is because we're using the existing fleet, uh, as a down payment and a trade-in. So we're getting over, uh, quarter million dollars in credit for those carts. Uh, to actually purchase that same fleet would be about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So the rental rate for the same period, for four years, would be seventy-nine thousand dollars, just to rent them. But there, at the end of that rental rate, there would be no, uh, trade-in value. We would just go back to, uh, to Yamaha and then just rent some new ones. It, the, the rental rate would probably go up a lot higher, because we wouldn't be getting a credit for the, uh, for the trade-ins. And then so the last two pages are for the same thing, except these are electric cars. Now, Jeff doesn't want electric cars, they don't have as much power to go up the hills to Tony Butler, so he wants, uh, gas-powered, um, golf carts. The other thing is that the golf course doesn't have any money, but, uh, we're spending five million dollars on the renovation of, of the greens, the tee boxes, and the landscape for holds one through eighteen, so we wanna have, uh, a new fleet when we open up. And so, uh, the budget that we adopted this year had revenues over expenditures, a surplus of revenue of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So obviously, we wouldn't need all seventy-nine thousand, now we would just need, uh, I didn't do the math, but it's roughly, um, about, uh, maybe twenty-five, no, we're bad.
How much are you all spending on, uh, repairs on the current?
I budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars a year for both the last two years we've used, and even had to do budget amendments to raise that rate, so thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
We need about twenty grand to do this a year, so.
So we'll be saving the money, we'll be saving fifteen thousand a year.
Well, I have the thirty-five thousand dollars a year in my budget for repairs, this comes back as twenty thousand dollars, so we're basically making the fifteen thousand dollars up there. But like I was, I mean, the city manager was saying, when this, end of this lease comes up, we're gonna have a much elevated payment, because we don't have anything to trade in.
But you will have made more money now, right? Cause you've got.
Completely.
Now, the one thing on the thirty-five thousand is that, um, he is gonna save that money, but I think that there're gonna be some more improvements that we need to make, like the golf carts, they're cracked, they need to be repaired. So if, if they can buy the material, uh, Oscar said they would go in and, and lay some of that new, new, uh, new cart. So, uh, I think our recommendation is that we, we lease the cars, have the general fund provide the money this year, and look at the budget for next year, see how it, how it's, how it's turning out. If the golf course can't come up with that for that, for the first opening, then maybe we have the coverage for two years. And I think for now, I think we need to do that.
There's also something that, um, the golf carts will not be here for a year. So if we order them tomorrow, we won't get them till next November. So we're talking a year from now, and, and a new fiscal.
So we don't pay for them, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt. We don't start paying for them till they arrive.
Correct.
And this through a buy board, correct?
It's through buy board?
Yeah.
But when we establish the P O this year, it was still the money that would have to come into it this year, and then we turn the P O over. So, yeah, we'd have to come up with it this year.
So, and then, um, the idea of having the, uh, the GPS, it's a GPS cutoff switch, so that nobody can actually take that cart onto the greens that we're gonna spend about five billion dollars for, and just park on top of them. We're only gonna have four dedicated carts that can do that, and that's for handicapped golfers. And they're allowed to park on the green, they're the only ones that can do that.
But we'll have, it's a GPS, and there's areas marked off that they can't drive into those certain zones, or, or they have ten seconds to get out, or the cart dies, and they have to push the cart out before it will go again. So up near greens, up near tee boxes, in really bad rough, it would shut off. And like you said, there's, there'll be four carts that will allow handicapped people to be able to drive up closer to the greens, because the carts will shut off on all the other carts.
Now, we're not, we're not gonna be buying that system tonight, we need to put something on the agenda for, for us to consider later, but for now, we're just recommending that we go with the, with the rental of the gas-powered carts from Yamaha.
Are there any other questions?
And that the general fund paid for, for the first year as well.
But this is, this is the line that we're gonna vote on?
Yes, but I'm asking if there's any other discussion. I think, I mean, it's something that I think you've been, made it very clear, we're putting in a lot of money into the golf course already. You're gonna be saving ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars anyhow, because you're putting in all the money into the repairs, so it, it, it makes sense. It makes sense, and I'm gonna hold you to it, that you're gonna work really, really hard, and once it opens, you're gonna start making more money. And so when we're coming up for the renewal, or it expires, we're in a different, healthier position.
Y'all need to take a tour out there.
Yes, let's do it.
They, they, tons and tons of dirt.
I'm seeing virtually, I'm following you.
Okay.
But yeah, no, I'm, I, you're doing a great job out there, and we wanna be able to support you. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Item eleven, presentation by Chief Kester on the audio/video equipment and software that allows for cloud storage and possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract to upgrade and replace the police department's equipment.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, uh, Michael Kester, your police chief. Uh, got a short presentation here, uh, get right to it. Just a little background, um, back in twenty seventeen, uh, previous chief contracted with WatchGuard to replace the systems back then, and that in-car system is now end of life. Shortly after I was named police chief, I added in the body cams that matched up with the WatchGuard. They're not quite end of life, but they're getting there. But the biggest issue was, we keep all the videos on servers in the police department. Now, in twenty seventeen, wasn't too bad, but once we started adding in the body cams, we quickly ran out of space. And if you recall, every year, I'm coming adding for additional, ask them for additional servers for that, to hold those videos. Uh, because the age of the equipment, it started crashing this year, and, uh, having to retrieve all that information, get all new servers, that's, uh, that's been a challenge. So, uh, replacing, and actually, the primary thing here is to upgrade to cloud storage, so we can eliminate, eliminate that problem and, uh, move forward with what basically everyone else is doing. But in doing this, uh, that problem and move forward with what basically everyone else is doing. But in doing this, just to compare apples to apples, we got four quotes from Utility, GTAC, Axon, and of course, WatchGuard, who has since been purchased by Motorola. So, like I said, we started with Motorola WatchGuard in 2017, figured out we're having issues earlier this year, but after budgeting had started. So, I'll get to that point towards the end of the presentation. But looking at a hundred and twenty body cams plus fifty in-car cameras as an upgrade, all brand-new and state-of-the-art, through WatchGuard, would be about one point one million dollars. These are all five-year contracts that, they're all the same. When we started looking at this, it was all on a five-year increment through all these businesses. Axon, which I'll tell you, is the, like, top of the line when it comes to this. You may not know, but Axon is also the provider of tasers, sole source for that. So, in the packet, there was, I think, basically three quotes. One was as high as three point five million, but that included tasers for all the officers as well as a bunch of training. They have an amazing amount of add-ons there for that. But bottom line, when we cut it down to a hundred and twenty body cams and fifty in-cars, it was about two point five million over five years. GTAC, same thing, another company brought in. They're a little closer to Motorola, but still a little higher than Motorola, one point one-six. And then, we brought in Utility. And I'll tell you, and, you know, discussions with the city manager initially, he's like, oh, you know, you go out and talk to other companies about this. I'd never heard of Utility. Turns out, they're actually a nationwide company. They're based out of Houston. They have a lot of agencies here in Texas. And when they came down and talked to us, we were all quite impressed. Just a short couple of minutes.
Utility provides a connected universe for digital evidence capture, upload, management, and sharing. Leveraging intelligent technology to automate video recording, aligning with policy, ensuring the collection of critical digital evidence. The Utility Universe starts with EOS, the intelligent body-worn camera. With patented technology, EOS is securely mounted in any uniform, preventing it from falling off or collecting critical data. When an officer gets into their patrol vehicle, EOS automatically connects through a secure, encrypted Wi-Fi network to communications and the in-car video system Rocket by Utility. Now, the officer and vehicle cameras, including automation triggers, are connected and synchronized to adhere to the department's policy for video activation and deactivation. Multiple layers of automated recording redundancy create a policy-driven safety net. One example, automatic activation through computer-aided dispatch. When a 911 call is placed, an officer is assigned. EOS and Rocket cameras automatically activate when the officer arrives on scene, simultaneously tagging files with all relevant data for that call. During an enforcement activity, triggers activate recording through Rocket and EOS cameras. During a foot pursuit, EOS sensors automatically trigger recording. When an officer unholsters their firearm or CEW, EOS can activate recording, sending real-time alerts to dispatch. Because seconds mean lives, intelligence matters. Utility's universe has multiple layers of safety. For officers in the field, Polaris can be used as an alternate communication system. Critical alerts, such as BOLOs, can be displayed on their body camera, tablet, or MDC. EOS adds a layer of safety protection. If an officer goes prone, alerts are sent to dispatch and all officers within a predefined area, along with GPS coordinates, enabling them to respond quickly. Dispatch and other assigned parties are able to view a live streaming feed of the officer's EOS camera to provide immediate response and support to the officer. This is not limited to the department. The system's mutual aid capability allows agencies to share critical situational information while acting as a force multiplier to solve critical incidents for emergency response through Polaris, Utility's cloud-based digital evidence platform. All collected audio, video, and metadata offloads directly to Polaris through the cellular network. Through Polaris, departments can view and manage all digital media evidence with rich interactive media playback, reporting capabilities to support day-to-day operations, and case management for operational efficiency. For rapid response to video release requests, built-in publishing tools include quick redaction and automatic transcription and translation. Within moments, digital evidence cases can be shared with the district attorney and in response to public requests. Utility helps clients save the day every day with digital innovations, revitalizing frontline professions, renewing respect and authority, restoring community trust. Utility, a connected universe for digital evidence capture, upload, management, and sharing.
So, ultimately, Utility comes in just under a million dollars for the five-year package. But the biggest difference between Utility and the other three, a lot of what you saw in there, because they all somewhat have all the same stuff, but they're add-ons with the other companies. With Utility, it's a one-package deal. You get everything for the lowest price. Now, going back to, this wasn't budgeted. So, I'd been discussing this for a while with the city manager, and I actually tried to get this presentation in September because we always have salary savings, which goes back into the general fund budget. And this past year was over four hundred thousand dollars. And I was looking to maybe, hopefully acquire that. And then, let those circumstances happen, got pushed a couple of months out. So, here I am. But if we went with this package, it would take a three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar initial payment. So, I will say with Motorola, because we currently have them, and they can work with us a little easier, they can provide other financing options, but it would still cost more.
But I, I think Motorola also lost some of the video earlier this year.
Yeah, all the issues we were having with the hardware is, was Motorola or, yeah, now Motorola's product, initially bought with WatchGuard.
Would Utility be your choice?
Yes, right now it would be.
And we, we do have, like I said, revenue over expenditures, so we can actually cover this just for this year. And then, the chief can actually put...
Budget for the rest of it.
Put the rest of the, the four years into his budget and cover that out of his own budget. Now, I was having to do this again.
Chief, is there any grant opportunities for this type of need?
I haven't looked at any. There could be, but...
Yeah, I'm gonna say the county got, some of the constables got body cams. Granted, the constables offices, ten, twenty officers each department.
Right.
My only, this is my only concern, chief, is that these, I, I've seen a number of these through the years with the county. And these companies promise you the world, and then they just don't deliver. And so, I don't want you guys to be in a lurch. I would, I would recommend to the commission to allow the chief to reach out to them to see if they'll give you some equipment for, you know, for you to do a test run to see if that's what you like. And I would recommend that you would give it to the guys that are the worst at technology. Because if they can handle it, it, it's great to have, like, the greatest technology in the world, but no one knows how to use it, or only five officers know. It's not that great. But I just wanna make sure that whatever decision we make, chief, it, you're gonna be happy with it in a year or two years or three years with it. So...
Right.
And I've seen them done, sorry, what was I saying? I've seen it done before where they'll give you guys equipment for you guys to give it a test run for so, so many, so much time, and then you guys make the decision at the end.
Question, does Utility have their own products, or do they use Motorola or Axon products?
They have their own products.
Okay.
The, the body cam is actually a cell phone without cell service, but it has a, a mounting thing in the shirt that the officer is wearing that locks it in.
Are you aware of anybody else using it, chief?
Yes. Harris County uses it. Laredo's the closest one that uses it. Arlington. And if, you know, Chief Jaime Ayala from Edinburgh, he came from Arlington, and I talked to him about Utility, and he, he said that they like it and they use it there. They actually talked about switching to Axon. They didn't.
Excuse me, chief.
Sure.
I brought this name to your attention a while, Bank. Have you reached out to the state, in particular, Michael Banks?
No, I haven't.
I ran into him a couple of weeks ago. I would ask you to reach out to him and get his input. I know they have some funds available, all right? So, they might be able to help out. I do realize it's, he is quote-unquote the governor's borders czar, but by saying token, they're dealing with a lot of drug issues. Okay? So, I know there's funds there. We just need to reach out and see what they can do for us. And if you need their number, I can get that for you.
Okay.
But it'll be a cell number, not his office number.
Yeah, I've met him.
Okay.
And then, another question. How urgent is this?
Yeah.
I needed it yesterday.
Okay.
Well, I, I...
That being said, I'm here now, so.
You know, I, listening to Daniel, I think that it is, it would be nice to, to have that kind of trial run. But having heard the chief say that some of our local, I think you said Edinburgh and Harris County and other folks that are, that are happy with it. And if it's something that you, that you need yesterday, then I, I would, I would urge the commission to, to move forward with this. Having, you know, being admonished, I guess you, if you will, by Commissioner Lopez that you wanted to give you that opportunity to be able to, because we, ultimately, we wanna support you, want you to be happy, and we want you to, and, and I can, I can, you know, technology is, it's, it's like a, it's a gift, but it also can be something that can hold up your, your, your staff. And, and we don't want that. And, and we want to make sure that it's something that's user-friendly, that anybody can, can use it. And, and if, but if we don't have that time and it's something that's urgent, I think that it's important for us to, to move forward if that's your recommendation, chief.
And, and it's a three-to-six-month turnaround if we did that. So, I'm sure we could get something initially, just in the meantime, to check it out.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to, to accept Utility as the police equipment provider.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. And I, and I do wanna thank you for everything that you've been doing. I know we've been going through some, some tough stuff here in the city of Harlingen. And I'm, I'm very proud of you and the department and everything that you've been doing to, to keep our community safe. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, we're gonna take a two-minute recess and be right back. Thank you. We are going to resume. The time is now seven twenty-one, and we are back in session after a brief recess. We are moving on to item 12, consideration and possible action to award a contract on behalf of the homeowners for the demolition and reconstruction of a home located at 408 West Cora to be overseen by the Community Development Department's Housing Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Program funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Sandy?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the city of Harlingen's Community Development Department administers a rehabilitation and reconstruction program. We are ready to start on our next home located at 408 West Cora. We did open for bids on September the 10th, and bids were gonna be due on October the 2nd. We did have a pre-bid meeting on September 19th as well. So, on October the 2nd, we received four bids. I, I submitted the bid tabulation. The lowest bid was a hundred and two thousand two seventy-seven. The next one was one oh seven eight fifty-six. The next one was one sixteen four fifty-two eighty-eight, and the last one was one twenty-nine two twenty-two. We do have to check that all of the contractors are eligible to work for federally-funded projects. The lowest bidder currently is AGC Design and Construction. They do have a little issue with their registration on SAM.gov. So, we were going to recommend awarding their contract, but currently, unless they straighten that issue out, you know, we may give them a few days. It's gonna be up to commission at this point. But otherwise, then we would recommend that we go with the second lowest bidder, which is Lifetime Builders, at one oh seven eight fifty-six. Any questions? I did also speak to our Public Works Department briefly right before the meeting regarding the demolition cost, perhaps recommending that the demolition of the home be done in-house and maybe save a little bit there.
Can you just double-check with the funding agency to make sure that we can do this force account?
Yes, I'll, I'll double-check. But I'm pretty sure that we, that it's okay. But however, we did go out for bids for both items, demolition and construction. So, I'm not real sure legally how that would work.
Because the bids are itemized, Mark, I think we can, I talked to Oscar. Oscar says we can get two thousand dollars off, essentially, so it'd be about two thousand eight hundred dollars to do the demo ourselves in-house. Because the bids are itemized and separated, I think we can reject the demo bid but accept the construction bid, correct?
Yeah.
Perfect. And so, yeah.
Okay. So, is there a motion to do that?
Wait, so, just, I just wanna double-check. So, in the AGC Design and Construction, there is a clerical issue, correct?
It's with their registration with SAM.gov, which is the system for awards management. They have their UEI number, which is their unique entity identifier. But the registration, SAM changed their system. It used to be the Dunst number, and now it's a UEI number. So, they have to re-register. And that's where the company is at. I did speak to their representative earlier today, and they said that they were just waiting back and that they had told them that it would be any day.
Okay. So, then I'll make a motion to approve accepting AGC as bid, construction cost bid, subject to Gabe signing off on it. Once the paperwork's done and ready to go.
And could you potentially, if that doesn't work out, just authorize him to take number two?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Just so that way, it doesn't have to come back.
Yeah, the, the federal government is not known for speed.
Well, that's my point. The, my point, yes. And, and so, if it comes to a point where, you know, we need to, to move forward and, and authorize Gabe to be able to do it. And, you know, we want to save the money, but we also need to make sure it's compliance, right?
Right.
And so, I think that would be great. All right. So, did you have a motion?
Let me raise the...
I'm sorry. Can we, I would appreciate if we could impose a time, maybe ten days or something because...
What do you recommend?
Most, ten days.
Ten days?
Yes.
Ten, ten working days.
Working days is okay.
Okay.
I leave that to discretion. If you, ten days, I'm fine with ten days. So, motion to approve AGC Design and Construction LLC, Construction's bid, subject to Gabe approving it, and if not, moving on to Lifetime Builders RGV LLC, and we'll be rejecting both demolition bids.
Within the ten-day period.
Within the ten-day period, sorry. Ten business-day period.
Yes.
It's a long motion.
So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, consideration and possible action to select the highest-ranking bank depository pursuant to RFP number 2023-18 Depository Banking Services. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. We did go out for bids for solicitation, solicitation of depository banking services. This will be for the three years beginning 2024 through 2026. The last time we went out for bids was in 2019 for 2020 through 2022, and we did extend it for one year. And now, we are going out for bids. We did have a, a five-committee staff member to rank the bids. And we did ask representatives of each bank. In case you all had questions, we, we are recommending the highest-ranked bank, which was Plains Capital.
Kareem was smart. He didn't even show up.
The what?
Kareem was smart. He didn't even show up.
Um, well, I did have a question.
Sure.
And in terms of fees, and, and I did reach out to, to the finance to ask how much, and I, and I don't know yet, but I don't know if you have that to share with the commission. I don't know what we've, what we spent in terms of fees for the last, in the last fiscal year with Frost.
I'm sorry. I did, I did not bring that. I apologize. But we do have representatives from, from Frost and... But, uh, we do have representatives from, from Frost, and, um, you don't know how much we, we spent in the campaign. I could get that for you on the, so I could, I could provide that to you.
And the only reason why I was asking is that, um, there are service fees, right, for each, uh, on each of the proposals?
Right.
But, um, one of the proposals have the fees waived, and so I wanted to see exactly, you know, what would that cost? What does that look like? What, in terms of, in terms of fees?
Right, right. Sorry about that. I, I, I didn't get to, to get that together, sorry.
That's okay. I should follow up.
You wanted to get that, and we can.
Is it, do you have access to it at this point?
I can, I can run down and go get it.
Okay. Then maybe what we can, what we can do, uh, does there, is there another question for, for Robert right now? No? Okay. Then maybe, um, if you want to do that, just so that way we know if it's, if it's a significant amount, then I'd like to know. If it's not, then, then that's fine too, but-
Okay. Let me go get that real quick.
And maybe what we can do is, and while Robert is doing that, we can just give a few minutes to each of the, the banks to, is that what you want to do?
No, I was just gonna say, let's move on.
Oh, to the next one? All right, even better. Okay. Um, item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve a fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual work plan for the Harlingen EDC.
Honorable Mayor, City, City Commissioner, good evening. My name is Orlando Campos, CEO of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. We have provided in your package the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual work plan for the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. This was a collaborative endeavor between not only myself, but the entire staff of the Economic Development Corporation. We basically spent a whole day looking at our, what we were proposing to do for this coming fiscal year. You will recall that in July, most of you were involved in a stakeholder retreat to come up with the strategic plan for the corporation for the next three years. This plan that we are presenting to you today is basically a plan to help deliver on the goals that were highlighted during that retreat. The mission of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation is to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Harlingen through the creation of wealth, jobs, uh, and investments. We have several guiding principles that we try to live by and work very hard to ensure that we deliver, uh, on them. Um, that's obviously to make a difference by serving as a catalyst for economic growth and vitality in our community to enhance the long-term quality of life, uh, for residents. And we do that through a variety of ways. Basically through corporate recruitment, trying to attract companies here to the area, business retention and expansion, to work with existing businesses and help provide support, uh, to their growth, um, and also look at potential opportunities, uh, for redevelopment as well, as well as working very closely with our key stakeholders to provide support to businesses that are looking at, at, uh, opening up here within the community, i.e. startups, uh, as well. We obviously also have, um, state laws which we have to, which we are governed by, which we also have to abide. But during our work plan, we basically selected six goals that emanated from that retreat. Goal one was to develop an aggressive business attraction and retention, uh, strategy. Uh, this is through business recruitment, both domestically as well as internationally. We're also going to focus on retail commercial recruitment and obviously to enhance and solidify and formalize our efforts related to business retention, uh, and expansion as well. Goal two is to foster a highly skilled local workforce, and this is, uh, by leveraging the, um, resources that we have available through Workforce Solutions Cameron County, and also to work with the Harlingen School District, TSTC, and other institutions of higher education so that we help create a higher skilled labor force. Create, goal three will be to create an entrepreneurial innovations, uh, hub here within the community itself. We have begun a study, uh, that was started about a year ago to look at this endeavor. That study has not been completed, so we are going to be working with our partners to help finalize that study and start delivering on looking at a, um, an entrepreneur, um, hub here within the community and hopefully have that open within the next few years or so. Goal four is to support infrastructure for local industry, looking at utilities, transportation, rail, working very closely with the airport, the port of Harlingen, just as, as an example. But obviously, we have to bring these individuals to the table to help, uh, ensure that Harlingen, uh, that we have the infrastructure that is needed for new industries that are looking at the community as well as existing, uh, industries. Goal five is to develop and execute a unified marketing program to elevate Harlingen locally, nationally, and internationally. This was, uh, an item that we brought up during our budget process to, uh, help hire a, an advertising agency to help put together the message that we wanted to convey, uh, about our community. So we are in the process of finalizing the RFP, which we will put out into the market and hopefully hire a marketing firm that will bring in the expertise and the resources that are needed to build a stronger marketing program for the community. And then goal six is to elevate organizational structure to be a model for economic development. This is ensuring that our board of directors, as well as our staff, have the capacity and knowledge that is needed to stay up to date on economic development trends so that we move forward. The ultimate goal, my personal ultimate goal, is to help make our organization a certified economic development organization through the International Economic Development Council as well. As part of the package, we also included a calendar of events. These are events that the EDC has focused on over the last, uh, few years. Doesn't mean that we will do every single event, but it gives you an idea of some of the events that we are looking at participating, uh, over the fiscal year. We are a relatively small organization made up of, uh, six staff members, uh, including myself, and so I'm very pleased to be here with you, and I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Looks great.
I don't really have questions. I would just, something that I would like to have seen a little more, and I'd, in fact, I'd ask this commission to, to table approval on this, to give you more time to work on it, is that some of the things you did, I think were fantastic. So if you look at goal three, strategies, one, two, and three, I'm just kidding, whenever you, you get there.
Sure.
So like on strategy number one, you say finalize entrepreneurship slash innovation hub study and market analysis by fiscal, you know, quarter two of, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
I love that, right? Because what you're doing there is you're giving yourself an end date, like by this date, this will be done.
Yes.
Right? And then on number three, you do the same thing, right? Like, uh, quarter four of twenty twenty-four. But on the second one, you're saying establish entrepreneurship slash innovation hub ad hoc committee.
Yes.
And what I would like to see is, I, I want to be able to have a matrix for us to be able to judge performance, right?
Yep.
And I would like for you guys to consider going back and putting deadlines and/or numbers to each thing. So like, for example, like you did one, I really liked it, um, for example, if you look at goal one B, uh, bullet point four, you said meet with at least four foreign trade organizations and four chambers of commerce. I love that. I love you gave yourself a target to reach. But then there's others that just don't have a target or just broad, like broad strokes. And I think in my mind that this commission should recommend or push for, for you to have numbers to each one of those.
Sure.
Uh, to the best of your ability. Some of them are aspirational, right? Like, I saw one that was like, leverage, leverage, leverage social media to increase followers, website. Well, that's, that's a big goal, but how are you going to accomplish that goal? And when are you going to accomplish that goal by?
Sure. And a lot, some of that will be highlighted in the final strategic plan that is still being worked on by the, um, consultant that helped moderate that event back in July. So the three-year plan will have those specifics. For this particular plan, we did try to provide some specifics, especially with those items that we had control, uh, over. Obviously, some of the things that we listed as part of our strategies are contingent on us working with other individuals, other groups, stakeholders. So we will work as fast as we can, but we're also very cognizant of the fact that we are also, uh, can, that everything that we do is contingent on how fast they can move as
On that note, I, I agree wholeheartedly. There's a lot of material that you, yourself, and your staff will not have any control of.
Yes.
Uh, for instance, working with people in Mexico. Something happens across the border, you're up the creek. And that, that's something that, that's, that I see quite well. I saw that back in the, uh, mid-nineties when that, uh, presidential candidate was assassinated in Mexico.
Quelísimo.
That was a tough one. That changed the perspective of the whole gamut in Mexico. So I, I understand that. I, I do realize that one of the things you're trying to do is, is, uh, work with people in Mexico. I love that. More than you realize, because I can also give you names and numbers so you can work with some people. Works out fine. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yep.
But then I'll stay in the background.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly go back, take a look at the plan and be as much specific, uh, as you'd like.
Yeah, 'cause you guys know better, right?
Yes.
But like, I'm looking at your goal six, I think a lot of those could be, you know, deadlines can be put on that so that we make sure we keep moving.
Sure.
I think it's great. Orlando, you have a really good, um, roadmap here, and I, and I know you put in a lot of effort in, into it, but I don't know that there's a, a sense of urgency or a deadline that, that is, is attached to this right now. So I don't think there's too much harm in going back and revisiting and just the things that you can identify.
Yeah, sure.
Um, to put those. And then clearly, when before that, the, the plan is adopted, um, we would definitely want to see, and, and you and I have, have, have had many conversations about, you know, goals, immediate goals, and, and all of us have really here. And we, we, you have a commission that's very hungry and ready for change and, and growth in the city of Harlingen in terms of what's happening, you know, in one year, two years, three years. And, and I know that you're going to be able to deliver on that, but, um, I don't know if that's, that's something that we can, that we can do. And anything that you can't, because you can't put a, a figure on it, that, that we understand, and we can revisit that later down the, the road. But maybe that is something that, I don't know if you want to do a motion to, to table it for, at this time, and then we can bring it up at the next commission.
Okay, sure.
And within reason. We know, we don't want you putting, you know, trying to think that on every single, um, item or, or line item that you need to have an actual concrete number. But if it makes sense, then, then we'd expect that.
Sure. Absolutely.
That's why I loved how you used just fiscal quarters, right? Because it gives you that wiggle room you want, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, so Daniel, in statistics, if you give a date, don't give a number. And if you give a number, don't give a date.
There's that, yes.
So don't follow that guidance. But, um, you've done such a great job in, in such a short period of time, um, being here and opening doors and networking, and, and, and your team is phenomenal. And I know that, you know, that we're, we're headed in the right direction and just kind of tweak it just a little bit, bring it back, and I'm sure that everybody will be happy with it.
Absolutely.
Make a motion and table this, uh, plan.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. And next, Robert's not back, great?
No.
Okay. Consideration and possible action to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Revitalize Harlingen Round Two Guidelines and Programs.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner, good afternoon, or good evening. Orlando Campos, CEO of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. We've provided in your package, uh, a presentation on the Revitalize Harlingen Facade Improvement Program, which was launched by the HEDC in FY twenty-three. So we wanted to come to you today to give you a quick update and overview, basically a final report on the program, uh, also discuss a few recommendations that the staff and the board has also approved and seek your approval in moving forward in launching the FY twenty twenty-four, uh, program. You will recall that in FY twenty-three, the HEDC launched the program with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in seed funding, um, and this, these funds provided for a matching grant of up to ten thousand dollars per selected applicant. The purpose, of course, was to improve property aesthetics of targeted areas within Harlingen, encourage retention of jobs, maintain and increase property values, and stimulate further economy in the downtown areas. A zone was established in downtown Harlingen, running along F Street north to downtown Harlingen, bordered by Jackson, uh, and Tyler, and, um, on the west side, M Street, as well as the railroad tracks. Some of these options, some of these, uh, properties fell within the downtown Harlingen region, so they also had to abide by additional criteria if they were looking at remodeling their locations. The HEDC dispersed a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to local companies for a total of over four hundred thousand dollars in repairs that were done to, uh, buildings in the downtown areas. Sixteen businesses were provided funding. There were three additional companies that did apply but did not qualify because they did not fall within the zone that was, uh, approved by the board as well as the city commission. Some of the improvements that were made included, uh, fence constructions, new signs, roofs, uh, painting of exterior walls, uh, repairs to, uh, the exterior facade of the buildings. Since this was a new program that was laun, was launched, obviously, there were some lessons learned, uh, along the, uh, the process. Some repairs were not within public view, such as roof repairs and parking lot enhancements. Some repairs were not professionally, uh, done, um, and some of the feedback that we got from local businesses was that they were having issues finding local contractors to, uh, help fulfill the projects that, uh, they had requested funding for. In addition to this, uh, some of the projects that, uh, were approved did not move as quickly as we wanted. Um, this forced us to encumber those funds, leaving other potential businesses that might be eligible not to be, uh, not, leaving us not with enough funding to move forward for other potential, uh, prog, programs. This past year, the program did start building quite a bit of momentum. We've already been getting, uh, calls from other local businesses within the zone wanting to know when we are going to be launching the, uh, next, uh, phase of, uh, funding, which is why we are here today. We have made some modifications to the criterias based on those lessons learned, and so basically we are recommending that, uh, roof repairs be deemed ineligible, uh, for the projects. We're also going to tighten the criteria and make sure that we make it clear that proposed projects must be within public view of the street, which is the essence of the program itself. Work must begin within ninety days of an award to ensure that we don't encumber the funds for too long so that we help ensure that we utilize the full funding for other businesses that might qualify, uh, as well. Um, we also want to make sure that programs that are approved meet all zoning as well as code ordinances, um, here within the, uh, the city of Harlingen. And we also want to make sure that improvements must be made by registered contractors, i.e. individuals, uh, who have tax ID numbers that, uh, actually are businesses. We're also going to, um, in the criteria, be more specific on the type of eligible improvements that will be allowed as part of this program, such as ensuring that we make it clear that exterior painting, reciting, cleaning, or other improvements revitalize the storefront of the, the building. Make it clear that roof repairs and parking lot resurfacing, um, might not be allowed if it's not within view of the front of the building, uh, itself. I talked a little bit about the qualifying zones, and our recommendation is to, uh, recommend that we maintain that zone, but that we also look at other areas within the community that could benefit from this program, uh, itself. We are recommending an additional zone, uh, which is made up of South Commerce Street to Little Creek Drive, North Commerce Street, uh, to North Seventy-seventh Sunshine Strip, North Seventy-seventh Sunshine Strip between Thirteenth Street and Loop Four Ninety-nine, and Morgan Boulevard between East Washington Avenue and Rio Hondo, uh, Road. We believe that these are high-traffic, uh, areas that, and some of the businesses located along these corridors could benefit, um, through enhancements of their, of their buildings to help drive more traffic and ensure the livelihood of those, uh, businesses. What we are requesting today is, um, your approval in, uh, moving forward with the expanded zone of the programs, uh, approval of the criteria and application, which we have also provided, uh, to you, and authorization to move forward with the full two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty- that was allocated and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Is there a motion to approve?
Well, give me a second, please. I like everything you've added. You you stated, I have a business right now that's uh that has started. And for a while, they've been working from the front to the back. And they put a lot of time and a lot of effort and they've increased their inventory. Now they're looking at expanding and adding a roof towards the latter part of the business and enclosing that to protect their inventory, protect the employees, and increase their employees. This this business has been around for a while. I remember this a lot of years. And now instead of moving used lawn mowers, they're brand-new lawn mowers. Okay, and they have a ton. It's a small business and as time goes by and I see that how this this program has really worked with some people and they they're wanting to strive and really kicks a major backside, I would ask you to consider in adding, just bringing it down just a tad, as far as nothing toward the back of the business, because this individual and there's gonna be others. They have put a lot of wear and tear, a lot of funds into the front portion of the business, but the backside, it's lacking. So that's the only thing. Other than that, I'm all for it.
Sure. Obviously, the essence was to be a facade improvement program. However, we're open to any recommendations that City Commission might have.
Well, it's called Revitalize Harlingen so that way we can revitalize and we can see it from the street.
I I I'm confused, Morales. Are you asking the EDC to give favoritism to this business?
There's gonna be other businesses that are they're gonna fall into the same situation, okay? They put in a lot of time and a lot of money and the front side looks good, but they're putting a lot some money, plenty of money with architectural plans or whatever they need to work on the backside and cover the backend of their business. That's it. I'm not trying to favor that business over another, but that's one business that's going to roll into other businesses that have the same situation.
So, sorry, Orlando, I believe that we have a couple of other programs that like we have like the People Funds Program. We have other programs that could work exactly towards Commissioner Morales's concern, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily need to be this one. We have a couple of other tools in our.
That is correct.
Perfect. So.
Awesome.
I don't know if you wanna get with Commissioner Morales to, you know, help him kind of navigate those so that Mr. Morales, Commissioner Morales has a resolution for his constituent.
Absolutely, and we'd be more than happy to meet with the company as well.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to approve this program as proposed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving back to item thirteen.
Hello, Mayor. So I can go back and get the statements, but on our statements, so there's no interest that we that we record because it's offset by the earnings credit. So the net expense that we record is zero. So it 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 all is offset by the by the earnings credit.
And so what was that credit that you earned for this last year?
For, I didn't add that one up. It's cuz it's like com- complex. It's like multiple. It's like multiple accounts and 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 it's offset by that interest, so it's kinda hard to to tell.
Commissioner, I think, um, excuse me, Mayor, I think you're going down a really good path. I don't know if you wanna consider giving Finance a list of questions that you have and that they can have the time to kind of get you all that info.
You're talking about compounding money over many, many, many time periods. And interest rates fluctuate by the market daily. And what you're asking is, in my opinion, is pretty much impossible to answer.
Maybe I wasn't clear. And maybe maybe I wasn't clear in my in my question. And so I'll just re-ask it. And if it and if I and I know Mike has more experience when it comes to finance and and definitely I consider you to be the expert. And so my question was, and and this may be something that you can come back to me with, is we have four proposals.
Right.
And out of these four proposals, there is one that is waiving all of the service fees. And so there's there's service fees that accumulate throughout the year. And I understand that we've got money in the bank and so we're going to get interest on that and it may be a wash. I get that. However, we would still be gaining if we don't pay those service fees, right? Because there's just there's still the opportunity to to have that.
That interest.
That interest, exactly.
Any offset of of expense, right?
And so.
There was one that that did have that.
Right. And so my so the the question is, what what is that number on average, right? Based on the 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 number of deposits and every all of, I mean, cuz there was a whole laundry list of service fees. And so that's what I wanted to to see if we could get that information.
It's kinda it's kinda difficult to tell.
And that's okay if you don't have it at this ti- at this time.
I can get it for you.
Yeah, no, no, that's not a problem. And then my other question was, when I was looking over them, the it seemed that and how Mike mentioned, it's hard to determine the the future. But it looks like there's caps on that interest rate. And so if the interest rates happen to go up, we are at a cap with some of these banks.
Right.
Right? So I'd like to know which ones have a cap and which ones don't.
So I believe Lone Star had a cap at four percent and Texas Regional was at three point five percent, yeah.
And and so I saw those clearly, but I didn't see a cap and and maybe I just didn't understand the material as much. And again, I defer to you in Plains Capital. And if are they here?
Yes, they are. We have representatives. I did not see a cap on the on that, if you.
And maybe there's a not.
No, they're they're shaking their head.
Would you like to hop out and offer here?
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. There is no there's no cap on the interest on the interest rate proposed.
Okay, so if interest rates go up in the future, cuz right now it's what, five point two, five point two-five?
Correct.
So if they were to go up, then with Plains Capital, you would, I mean, we'd go up with with you, right?
With the with the market, correct.
How that works, okay. And how are you able to, I had to take a double take on that. How are you able to 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 do that? I maybe that's not the right question, but it seems it's it's all it's a really good interest rate. And I think everybody on the commission saw that. So how are you able to to offer that to communities?
So they're indexed rates. So everybody does things different. Some banks use bank-managed rates. And so they're able to adjust according to the market, but they get to decide on what rates are being offered. Ours are rate are indexed so that you can clearly see it's it's available to you, public information is available to you. We'll provide you with the link. And we just wanna, you know, win the business. And so we're offering the better rates.
And it'll be at ten points, right? Is that right? Or did is that did I read that correctly?
Less less ten basis points, correct.
Yes, which would be five point fifteen, five fifteen.
Correct.
Yes.
There are a hundred basis points and a percent.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how much money are we gonna make off of the money that is in in the bank. And so that's what I wanted to make sure because I over the reading, I couldn't see if there was or was not a cap.
There is no cap.
Okay. Did anybody else have questions for them? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there was one thing, I'm sorry. Orlando, you are here. Just one point on your comment. Orlando, I don't know if you wanna pop up here real quick?
Senator, can you get ready to play that video that you received? Don't play it yet, though.
Orlando, just on one of your comments, the last one, he says, strong potential for fees to add up. Could you just clarify your concern on that one for Plains Capital Bank?
I think the, well, obviously, I'm not a financial professional either. So I sort of looked at the proposals sort of from a layman's perspective. And if I recall correctly and if I wrote that comment down, it's because during the my evaluations of the proposals, there were certain things that sort of stood out. And so I sort of it seemed like maybe there were some some potential costs that might come up based on what I read in the proposal. So but like I said, I'm not a financial professional at all.
Robert, did you did you see what, you know?
I mean, they all provided a schedule of fees cuz we requested it. I mean, I I do see what you're saying, but 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 there is like an earnings credit where it is offset, kinda like the way Frost does it, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So as long as we maintain a certain a certain balance, like say on one of them, they said if you maintain a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar balance, then that that eats up all of the fees that that would you would accumulate. And that's like an earnings credit, which we typically have more more than that balance because we try and keep whatever payables that we have plus payroll. And then we keep a small buffer. And then everything else we move to 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 a a taxable account. But the balance that we usually keep in the bank is is probably around four million.
Okay, so that alleviates.
To cover all the payables and payroll.
That alleviates Orlando's concerns.
Yes.
So so just so that I'm clear, because we have on average four to to five million in the bank, does that mean all of the banks that provided their proposals, there would be no fees?
Pretty much. That's the balance that we told them that we normally would have at the bank.
Okay. Can I, can you pop up back up here? And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Dacia.
Dacia. Is that so is that accurate? So there would there would be waived fees if there is more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the bank?
Correct.
Okay, so my concerns with all of the fees that there wouldn't be technically offset by the interest is just that there's no fees.
It's they're offset by the earnings credit. So being that you maintain on average four million dollars, that offsets all the service fees.
So in a in a you have other municipalities.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you happen to know what those fees are for those municipalities that are maybe similar to to ours? Cuz I I I guess I I still can't wrap my head around it because I get that it's offset, but you're still paying for it. Is that not correct?
No, that's not correct. So your balances are off, the earnings credit is going to offset the service fees by one hundred percent. So depend every municipality is different. Some cities are larger and they have a lot more activity than city parjins. Some are comparable. But the earnings credit rate is five fifteen. It's also indexed to the lower F Penns target rate. So if that goes up, that rate goes up. So you're gonna have a higher earnings credit that's going to offset the service fees. I don't remember what that number was on our proposal. Was it? And then we also offered a twelve twelve-month transition. So it's a twelve-month waiver fee, fee waiver of all service fees. So either way, you're not looking at a service charge. So based on the September analysis statement, I'm sorry, I don't have my cheaters. The service fees, let's see, the earnings credit on, of course, this is based on state September statement, which was a much larger balance, twenty million dollars. The earnings credit would have been nine thousand two hun- ninety-two thousand two ninety-five. And the analyzed fees were going to be ninety-one thousand, I'm sorry, one thousand one fifty-three, so. Earnings credit ninety-two thousand two ninety-five, analyzed fees are only one thousand one forty-two thirty-seven. So you have that excess earnings credit of ninety-one thousand dollars. So it offsets one hundred percent.
Thank you.
That's of course on a larger balance.
Right. And then we did clarify. I know we had a we had a call with with Kareem, right? And we did provide an update on, and I don't have that number here, but on four million dollars, the earnings credit would definitely still offset the service fees. I think two-hundred-and-fifty-six, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand would offset the fees one hundred percent.
So after I and I'm just trying to to have a better understanding for the for and maybe it's just me and all the entire commission gets it. But when I was looking at it and going over it with Finance, it looks like with that percentage, with that with that percentage, it would probably be around two-hundred-thousand dollars. Is that what it would be annually?
Right, like we calculated the the formula, the net, the five point fifteen.
Which over three years is six hundred thousand dollars, which is a a good, that's it's a positive thing. I'm just trying to to figure that out. Okay, thank you. I I appreciate. What about in terms of, I know that there was a question in regards to community service. Given that this is a, we are a a small community and and we try to keep things local, how would you service the citizens or the community of Harlingen? And what kind of community service do you do here in the city?
Okay, I'm gonna pass that over to Scott because he's our VDO.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Scott Alex, Business Development Officer for the Plains Capital. I know in our proposal, we included all that in there and I I'm not gonna be able to recollect that in my brain. But there we we do substantial amount of community service. So if you'll give me some time to locate that, I can.
You don't have to give me all the details just off the top of your head. And I think what I would like to know is is if these guys, I know right now they do have a really good relationship with with Frost and and they're able to pick up the phone. And if they got any, their customer service is wonderful. That's what what Finance has told me. And when it's, you know, who's on the other end of the line when they have a question?
That's a that's a good question. And and I do have members of of our of our team, Dacia. All of all of all of us are local, okay? So every member of our team, transition and your day-to-day service is gonna be local people. So Dacia is our treasury management officer for the Rio Grande Valley. Here with me is Roel Obulus. He's our branch manager here in Harlingen. He's gonna be involved in the transition as well. They will head up the transition team. Adon Ortiz is is standing back there. He's standing up now. He's our sales and service operations guy for all twelve of our Rio Grande Valley locations. So all the branch managers report to him. And we have Charlie Hervey. He's part of my team. He's a he's our senior vice president and commercial loan officer for Harlingen. But but every single person on our on this team will be given their cell phones to to Robert and Kareem. That they'll they'll get to know each other really well. And and we're, you know, we've done this many, many times. And I can promise you that the service will be there.
If I could just point out something, we've done business with their parent company for a long, long time. They're owned by Hilltop, who is our Muni Vaughn Council.
Didn't know that.
And and I will add, we're celebrating a milestone year this year. This is our thirty-fifth year of of service to the the people of Texas. So and we've been in the valley for over ten years as well.
Congratulations and happy anniversary.
I will add, we we employ almost three hundred people in the Rio Grande Valley, so.
Definitely. We we thank you so much. And I think you also have, I was going through the references, you do handle City of McAllen, right? Is that correct? And City of?
City of Donna.
Donna, yeah.
City of Port Isabel. And on a more local level, we take care of Valley International Airport and Harlingen Waterworks as well. So Marv can testify to that.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I know we are kind of, it's eight o'clock, but in all fairness, I do wanna give at least two minutes to each of the others that are here today. So if we can start with Texas Regional.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Alex Mead. I'm with Texas Regional Bank. I just wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to to submit a bid. We're here local and we're we'll still be supportive. We have great questions that you asked. So, you know, we're here to help. Anything you guys need, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lone Star.
This won't count as my two minutes, but I was offended by the short joke, so. So I'm I'm being accompanied by Vanessa Ochoa, who handles our public funds department. We have a department solely responsible for handling that. I wanted to share with you.
And you're with whom?
Huh?
You're with whom?
Vanessa Ochoa.
Lone Star National Bank.
Lone Star National Bank.
I was giving you a commercial.
Tomas Tomas Torres handles all of our operations here in Harlingen. A great, as I'm accompanied here by other bank members, I went to school with some of the folks that are here that represent other banks. We appreciate the fact that you've asked us these questions. Like Mr. Mead, I I am very grateful. And I hope that you consider the fact that Lone Star National Bank is a local bank here, a community bank here in South Texas. The question that was asked earlier about being philanthropic, in twenty-twenty-two, we donated over six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to the.
Uh, the question that was asked earlier about being philanthropic, in 2022, we donated over $630,000 to the, to the four counties of South Texas. Uh, whether it was through some of the things that you all had here or things that we had hosted in Raymondville, we were part of all of those donations. We did want to make a clarification on the 5.15 that was mentioned earlier. Vanessa, would you like to share that?
So, um, just to clarify on our proposal, um, we are paying interest on the accounts that are main, on the balances that are maintained at the bank. We do also have a sweep account that we offer and that is, um, paid based on the IRB, which is the interest on reserve balances at the Fed, which is essentially the rate that the Fed pays banks on the deposits kept in Fed accounts. And that rate is, um, five, it's currently 540 and we would pay 20 basis points less than that. So it'd be 520. So in addition to the rate that you would earn on your account balances at the bank, if the city chose to sweep those funds into the ICS, ICS account, it would earn 5.20 on those funds. We are waiving all of the fees. So there is no minimum balance required, um, at our bank. Um, you can maintain only the balances needed for your operational needs. Uh, we don't need any compensating balance to offset any fees. They'll be automatically waived. Not at ICS. At ICS, there's not, only on the balances maintained at the bank. So anything that you do maintain at the bank for operational will earn interest. And that is tied to, um, it's a fixed rate of 425 for the first six months. And then it becomes a variable rate that is tied to the 13-week T-bill. Uh, 13-week T-bill currently, um, is 533 and we would pay 70% of that, which today would be, uh, 373. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So again, thank you very much for allowing us to, to maybe do the explanation on that. Uh, and for your consideration of being one of the four banks that we're selected. So thank you.
Uh, just, I just want to make sure I understood. In, you spent 600,000 on, on, on the community?
That's correct.
Was that in the three counties or four counties?
Actually, it's in four counties. So we just did the fan drive in Willacy County. Uh, we also do things like BOMOs is part of ours. Uh, annual scholarship we raise, some of the students that were awarded four-year scholarships to institutions of their choice were from the Harlingen area. And, and again, that was in 2022, was about $630,000.
So it, there is no cap? Is that what you, um, what you just mentioned that there was a mistake or?
There's a cap on the bank balances. There is no cap on any funds in the, in the sweep account.
But we would have them in an operating account?
That's kind of the same thing with Plains Capital. If we're going to a sweep, that would get you 515.
Okay. So then if I'm looking at, just, just so that way I understand. Right. And, and that's how I read it. And I was kind of making my notes and based on the criteria and it seemed that they were ranked. Um, I wonder now if there was ranking done with this clarification, if that would have changed? Because now it seems that the, it's, it's basically the, the same. Is that, is that, is that not right, Mike?
No, it's still less than Plains Capital offers.
How so?
They, they take the, um, Fed Reserve rate, right? And, and you pay 0.7 of that.
So it's the, uh, 540 less 20 basis points for the sweep. So it's 520.
And theirs was 10. Is that why? Cause they, that's exactly.
And they're paying 5.25.
Okay. Sounds the same to me, Mike.
It's not.
Again, I guess some of the other things we'd like for you to consider, uh, we do have banks that are strategically have been fixated in the three county areas. Um, we also serve folks in other parts. Um, we were started, we're, somebody mentioned they're 35 years old, excuse me, they're 35. We have a 40-year presence. We're celebrating 40 years, uh, this year. Uh, we were founded by some gentlemen that have a very mutual, uh, uh, background like many in here. Forty years ago, they were wanting to serve a market that had been underserved and so they opened up a bank. And with that, we've expanded for over, to over 30 banks here in the Rio Grande Valley and outside of the area as well.
Fantastic.
And we do have representation on our board that are advisory board members and some of them are from this community. So we have advisory board members and then we have a board member that happens to be a woman as well.
I will say that, um, I did, we did have one of the advisory board members, um, Dr. Burke, and she wanted to be here today to speak. And she was, I think she's appointed to a board by the governor and was going to be in Austin. So she did provide something for the commission. Is that correct? We can. It's, it's one minute, two minutes?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner of Harlingen. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to present a video this evening. My name, as most of you know, is Linda Trevino Burke and I'm super proud to serve, um, on the advisory board for Loan Star National Bank. First and foremost, I want to say, we have several great banks in the valley and in Harlingen. And one in particular though stands out to me and I'd like to share with you exactly why. When I first moved back to Harlingen, I was born and raised here, but left for school for several years. And when I first moved back to Harlingen to begin, um, my practice in pediatric dentistry, I started at Su Clinica Familiar and was there for three years before deciding to move into private practice. Once I decided to move into private practice and establish, um, my business, I had to seek a loan, a small business loan to get started. I went to several banks. One actually was even a bank where my godfather, my padrino, was president at the time. And, um, he said, "Mija, you know, I think it's important that you realize this is a huge risk. You should probably rent a lease space and get started in a small lease space. And then one day move into a building where you're actually building a custom building on your own for your practice." So I left and my husband, Brian, and I left the bank and we thought, what are we going to do? I mean, we need money to start our business. So we went to Loan Star National Bank and met with Alonso Cantu at the time. And, um, I'm grateful because from that moment on, Loan Star National Bank believed in us. They believed in me. And I am so fortunate and so blessed now to have a thriving, wonderful practice here in Harlingen, Texas. And so I hope that you will consider in your decision-making this evening, how vital it is to choose a bank that believes in their community, to choose a bank that is from the valley, that individuals that are in leadership roles at the bank are going to meet with small business owners and, eh, basically anyone that comes to them, but especially small business owners that need help and need that, uh, help with their growth and becoming established and someone that will believe in their success. So thank you for hearing my story tonight. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present it and I hope everything goes well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to show the video. And if you have any questions, Vanessa's here to answer them.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes.
Rick Romitas, Senior Vice President with Frost Bank Public Finance. Just want to thank the mayor of the commission for the nine-year relationship we had with the city. Truly enjoyed, uh, serving y'all and will continue to, um, be at your service for anything y'all need. So.
Thank you so much. Is there any other questions for Robert or for any of the representatives from the commission? Nope. Okay. So is there a motion?
Yeah. Oh, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the finance department to, uh, work with Plains Capital Bank.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your time. We appreciate you. All right. Thank you. Item 16, consideration and possible action to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements for incumbency certificate addendum to Mauster Open End Vehicle Lease and Mauster Open End Vehicle Lease with Commercial Leasing Vehicle LLC.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, Michael Kestrel, your Chief of Police. Basically, this is a issue we've been having for a few years now where we can't get our vehicles that we're trying to replace our fleet with. We ordered, uh, Explorers last October and they still have not come in and we're still being pushed back. We don't know when we're going to get them. Uh, so in an effort to try to remedy this, uh, we're looking at our leasing option. And we've been in discussions with, uh, with Jerry Hadad from, uh, DNM Leasing and, uh, basically I'm recommending that we go ahead and go with a lease program. Uh, it'd be a three-year lease, depending on the number of vehicles we get. And, uh, this is budgeted as opposed to the last item, but. If you have any questions about the agreement, uh, I had sent it to Mr. Sossi and he's reviewed it. And Mr. Hadad with DNM is here for any questions.
You project? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will these be fully outfitted vehicles?
Yes.
With all the equipment necessary?
They come fully outfitted.
And did I hear you correctly? You placed an order last October and 12 months plus a day later, there's no delivery?
That's correct. The, I guess because they're still rebounding from COVID and there's not a lot of profit in fleet vehicles. So the numbers are down and bigger agencies are getting them before we are. And it's just taken a while. So this is a, another option.
The amount that you budgeted for this is about $200,000. How many, how many police cars will that get you?
Well, when we were talking earlier, we were looking maybe about nine and actually be a little less than that, depending on the vehicle and the equipment that's in it. So. Of course, now we would be providing the audio video equipment.
Okay. So.
It's actually budgeted, so we can actually do this. And our, our recommendation is to approve the, uh, the rental.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Hadad.
Thank you. Item 17, consideration and possible action to close the following streets on Sunday, December 3rd, 2023, from 8:30 AM to 12:00 noon to hold the South Texas International Marathon. And, Gabe, these are.
Yes, Mayor, this is going to be, have to be subject to TaxDOT approval for all the, uh, the streets that are on here that are on system roads. We do not have the authority to close them without TaxDOT approval. So, yeah, we can't do those that are within the city limits, uh, that are owned by the city. But those that are within the city limits are owned by TaxDOT. We need to get their approval first. So, uh, those have to be subject to their approval.
That was my concern when I saw this, that we didn't have the authority to, to, to close these roads. So do we know where they're at? Um, are, are they here or someone?
Coach?
Okay.
Good evening. Uh, yes, so I, so I had a meeting with TaxDOT, um, two days ago. And they told me that, um, correct, that, uh, once, once, um, they wouldn't, they would approve, uh, East, um, Business 83. But that you guys would approve, that Harlingen would approve whatever's in your jurisdiction, which I think we met with, um, a gentleman. And he said it was only from, um, Bass Pro Boulevard all the way to Harlingen Heights to the finish line. So that's about approximately about 1.3 miles, give or take.
They usually sent us that in writing. So we need to get that from them in writing. But they, they agree with the, uh, the decision to close those streets because they usually ask for a traffic plan also.
Exactly. So a traffic plan was, so I talked to Victoria Garza, who's the one in charge. She told me that, um, she gave me a sample and I gave it, I think I sent it to, uh, Mr. Franklin.
Who is that? I'm sorry?
Victoria Garza. She's in charge. She's a, from the Far District. She's in charge of the, of, uh, the closures, uh, TaxDOT. And so she told me to, to go ahead and talk to y'all and just, I would, all I need is to show her is, uh, your traffic control plans for your area, which is from Bass, Bass, um, Pro Boulevard, uh, around, uh, across, I think it's, um, Jefferson, Jefferson.
Yes, Jefferson Fair Avenue or whatever.
And then to, to Harlingen Heights and the finish line. And that's, that's it. But, uh, everything else, so every city is basically, um, doing ju- just their city. But on Business 83, I think, East, so that's where TaxDOT writes off on that.
So do you have a traffic plan?
So we, so I need it, I actually need it from you so I can present to them. So they, they want the city to give it to me.
Isn't, but shouldn't the marathon have one for the entire?
I have a plan. I mean, I have a, a route, but I can't, I mean, if I, if I have to do it, I would, I would have done it a long time ago. But they're asking me, um, they're asking for the city to provide one.
And is that something that we normally do, Gabe?
No, not for events, only for events that we sponsor. We don't normally do that for other.
Exact.
So this is a private event? This is not a City of Harlingen marathon?
Exactly, yeah. So it starts in the, I think the, the biggest, um, I guess, um, difference between this marathon and most marathons is that when a marathon is like, for example, you're, the Harlingen Marathon, it's held within the city. So they don't need TaxDOT permission. But, yes, sir?
We do.
Oh, you did? Okay. I didn't know that. So because it's going through your city, I think the city, um, provides that to TaxDOT. So, so, uh, TaxDOT says anything that's on Business 83, that they would do that. On, on, uh, East Business 83. So it starts in Donna and it's going to go in and out of, um, Westaco. And then, um, Mercedes, La Feria, and then into Harlingen. So it's a five-city, um, marathon, which has never been done in Texas. So that's why it's kind of like more complicated. Uh, but I, I think so far right now, uh, so for me to buy the, uh, event insurance, uh, it's through USA Track and Field. Uh, the Olympic Committee, Committee wants me to have a, a plan, but I can't unless, for example, the medical, uh, the medic, uh, plants, medical plants. I'm waiting for Mr. Stubbs to give me that. So then I go ahead and, I go ahead and put in, um, I'm going to go ahead and give it to USA Track and Field.
So if we approve this, is that what you need to take to TaxDOT?
Uh, yes, sir.
But we don't have the authority to, to approve this, even if we wanted to, because these are not roads that are under our jurisdiction, with the exception of that small piece. So we can't do that. And so another concern of mine is, um, this is a private event, not a city event. What, what's happening? Who's paying for the, the police officers? I, I'm assuming part of that is going to require to, to have the city run traffic and.
Yes.
So I would imagine that you would have a traffic plan to present to the city so that way there could be, uh, and I, I'm, I'm not sure how that works, but you're going to need also medics. And so what are, how is that? Cause it's a big ordeal. I know we just finished when we did ours for the City of Harlingen. You're going to have the paramedics, you're going to have police officers. And, and, and who's paying for that?
So, so we've been having meetings for the past year. Uh, and we've been getting together with, uh, uh, for example, the Harlingen, not the Harlingen, but the Donna First Responders, uh, Westaco First Responders, um, Mercedes First Responders, La Feria. So we've been, I've been having meetings with just about everybody. Uh, even, uh, I think, um, the Harlingen PD has been in some of the meetings. So we've been talking about all this for a while now. And, uh, so every city has been very welcoming as far as, okay, Coach, we got, we got this. Let, let's go ahead and work on this. Uh, so the only, the only thing, TaxDOT, this is what they told me, that they'll, they'll go ahead and approve, uh, Business 83. And that you guys have to, uh, the cities have to come up with a plan for their cities, for their city, their particular city.
The, excuse me, the, the part that corresponds to Harlingen is the tail end is the finish. That's it.
Yeah.
And what about Business 83? That's.
That's, that's all TaxDOT.
Correct.
But without the city's approval, this whole two-county, five-city marathon is dead in the water. All right? This is all private sponsorship. Okay? From donations that he's been working on. And this is something that has, uh, and I'm going to ask him some questions. Who do you have as far as a, as a main draw or potential draws to bring in people?
Well, we, we do have some world-class athletes coming in, so...
I think we're going off the agenda item. The agenda item here is just basically to close the streets. We don't have the authority to close the streets. If I do have some concerns, and I would recommend that you come back to the city and discuss how it is that you're going to be able to have the PD and STACK, because those are concerns that I have for the community. I want to make sure, you know, it's great that you're putting this together. I'm a runner, too. I think it's a great event. However, there are costs involved, and this is not a city-sponsored event. This is a private event, and so I want to make sure that my guys are getting paid. That's, and that we're not taking them off the streets to be manning this, this event. And so, those are my concerns. But those are not on the agenda right now. I would recommend to the commission to table this item, because we don't have the authority unless you're just going to take out the one street. But I think, based on what Gabe is telling us, I think that we need permission from TaxDOT first before we can move that direction. But I'll defer to, to Gabe for, for that.
You, you could have approved it, but it has to be subject to TaxDOT approval of that. So, we can't just go in, even though we passed this tonight, we can't go in and just close it. Even when we, like, for instance, when we had our Blues in the Hills, we had to get permission for Business eighty-three to close, and so we submitted traffic control plans for that. So, this is the same thing. Someone's going to have to come up with that traffic control plan.
So, do you, I mean, I could have done that a long time ago. If TaxDOT would have told me, "You do it," I would have done it a long time ago. But I, that's not what they told me.
I understand that. But I, I think that since this is a private event, I think those are things that you're going to have to handle with, with TaxDOT. I don't know that we have the authority to, to, to help you in this, in this instance, is basically what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Excuse me. Could we have another, if we're going to table this, which is what you're proposing, how soon can we have another meeting? Because this race is set up for December third.
We might be needing another meeting for another, another item that, that we didn't get to today. I'm not, I'm not sure how soon we can, we can have it, but it's not ready to be approved. We don't have the authority, you don't have the authority, I don't have the authority to do this. It's a state road, Commissioner.
I understand it's a state road, and he's been working with TaxDOT for a while.
Right. So, what did you bring to the commission to show us that TaxDOT is telling us and advising the commission to do this? What can you provide, other than you just telling us that?
I can go ahead and, go ahead and email, I think I emailed you what they asked me to do, Mr....
Now, do you have something in writing, sir, from TaxDOT that says, "Here, City of Harlingen, you know, TaxDOT is on board. Go, go right ahead and, and move forward."
Would you want for me to send that to you? Or, because I know I do have something on my phone, where they sent me, Victoria did respond to the questions you're asking me, the questions you're asking. So, they did send it to me, but I just had to wait to come here. I didn't know, I had to present that to y'all.
Can you send it to Oscar Garcia? Can you give me your business card, so you can...
And then I have a legal question for Mr. Marka to my stage left. Since this is a private event, what's our legal liability?
I mean, you would probably want insurance, if it was a city road.
Okay, do, do you have...
You don't have any authority to close it, obviously, a state road. It seems to me that there's a lot of work that needs to be done here before the commission can consider this.
Okay, and...
He's busy texting. Coach Mendoza, you trying to address him?
Not yet. And so, for our Parks and Rec guy, I mean, do they, do they have a nine ninety? Do they need a nine ninety? Do we need a nine ninety on them?
They would have to provide the insurance that the city requires, like the parks, with all of the coverage.
It's not just about closing the streets. It's, it's a lot more than, more than that. I just want to make sure that, again, I want to make sure that the runners are safe, that the community is safe, and that we're within our authority to, to do the things that you're asking of us to do.
So, so we would, I mean, we, we would pay the officers or whatever fee that you would ask. We, we would definitely do that.
And have you, again, well, I think I'm, we're veering off topic here, but I do think that it's probably something that needs to come back to the commission, because there are a lot of, a lot of questions.
Can you send them a copy of what insurance coverage you have also?
Oh, so the, so the insurance, USA Track and Field is waiting for me to give the, the plans, so they can, so they have to verify everything. Once they do that, then they go ahead and take my payment for the, for all the, so the whole, it'll be sanctioned by USA Track and Field, but I can't do it until I get the, the safety protocols.
Which means the road closures.
Yes. I mean, if you'd like, I can, I can work on that tonight, and I can tell you what, what road closures that I see for your section. I think your section is at mile twenty-four. We're at, at, I think at one P.M., and it's going to go over Lewis Lane and along the frontage, and then Bass Pro Shops. And so, that's, that's, I think that's called Parkway Court, Park Court. So, that's one, right? And then, once you get to Bass Pro Shops, you're going to stay on the, on the left side of the road, and then we're going to cross, we're going to cross that fifty-one?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four? And then we go into the finish.
Thank you, sir. Mark, can we take action on this item or not?
I really think we should take it.
Okay. So then, is there a motion to table?
Under legal advice to table it, yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post?
opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. If you could get with, with Mark and, and the chief and STACK, and I think there's a lot of work to, to be done, so that way, definitely want you to be able to move forward, but let's, let's cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, see what we can do to help.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on to board appointments, Commissioner Kinsey.
So, to take advantage of this new ordinance, the new ordinance for the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, we have to have certain, by statute, we have to have certain positions in there, correct?
That's right.
And one of them has to be either a municipal official or county official.
I think yours fits that bill.
No, she's a reserve deputy. She doesn't count, right?
Are you sure?
So, yeah. I don't think it counts. Therefore, I was going to appoint Shannon Harville. She's going to be my city appointment. She would fit.
Okay. I think she's already on it, though.
No.
No? Okay, all right.
She's like an ex-official member, essentially.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's the one I have.
Okay, for Keep Harlingen Beautiful, Maricela Avanado.
Replacing Daniela Tescarino with Joe Martinez for the Downtown Improvement Board.
And that's a downtown...
Yeah, downtown, well, I have another...
Downtown person, yeah.
Done.
All right. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
It's your birthday today.
Who?
The girl you removed from the board.
Shannon's jumping for joy.
Oh, one second. Item eight nineteen is executive session. We have item nineteen A, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code subsection five five one point zero seven two, to receive privileged attorney-client communication regarding the Humane Society. B, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code subsection five five one point zero seven one regarding MOU with the VIA. Consultation with, C is consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code subsection five five one point seven one regarding potential litigation. And D, pursuant... Pursuant to Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, attorney consultation. Section five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real estate, and section five five one point zero eight seven, economic development relating to Project Roosevelt. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. The time is now eight thirty-nine P.M., and we will be going into executive session. Thank you. It's now eleven twenty-four, and we are back from executive session and now out in open session. We have item twenty, consideration and possible action, and item nineteen A is discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
Proceed as, I'll take a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. And items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, I believe there is no...
No, we need to make a, a motion on twenty-three. So, twenty-one, twenty-two, no action on twenty-three. Consideration of possible action on item nineteen D is discussed in executive session. I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Happy good evening.